Gentlemen, and welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I can just ask everyone to take a moment, please silence their cell phones. I'd like to start off by introducing members of the board, starting at my far right. The audience's left is Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member. Moving to the audience's right is Frank Duffy, who is a full voting member. Next is Mark Fineran, who is a full voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently serving as the chair. To my left is Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk and a full voting member. At the end is Scott Peterson, who is also a full voting member and the vice chairman of the board. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk, excuse me, will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at a project. Please refrain from making derogatory statements. It can include an opinion in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, come to the podium, please state your name, address for the record, please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information isn't presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, for example, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any zoning board of appeals decision may be appealed, as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. First up on the agenda this evening is public comment. This is public comment towards anything that is not specifically referenced on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make any public comment on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none. We have two continuations this evening. First up is hearing number 075-22, Blue Moon Sea Grill Incorporated, 159 Main Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a parking reduction for a proposed restaurant. As previously indicated, I had a undisclosed, previously undisclosed conflict, and I'll be recusing. Scott Peterson will be taking over for the remainder of this hearing.
Thank you, James.
Mr. Chair, Acting Chair, just want to remind the viewing audience and the board that I had filed a public disclosure on this, which has been accepted by, been reviewed by the town council, and said, she agreed with my determination, I had no conflict of interest.
Great.
It's been several months, but I figured it'd remind folks.
Thanks for the reminder. Frank?
Mr. Chair, with the recusal of Mr. Morris, I guess I now become a voting member on this panel, which I was not. I was appointed to the board on the 24th of October. The first hearing in this matter was the 27th of October, and I was ill that day, and I was not here. However, I did watch the proceedings from the safety of my home. And just to be sure, I re-watched the proceedings on October 27th, two nights ago. I have read off everything in the file, and I've been present for every other session of the board regarding this matter.
Mark, any issues?
(laughing) Starting with me?
No, no, no. Okay, Suzanne, could you catch us up from our past meeting?
We've already opened this hearing, but we did have three more letters of support submitted. And that's all that's new that I have in the file.
Okay, for the applicant, Attorney Amet.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. As you know, I'm Bob Amet. I'm a Falmouth attorney, but I say that for the record. I represent the applicant. And after I speak fairly briefly tonight, I'm going to ask Jason Adams, who is here to my right. He's the author of the parking assessment report that we have filed, and he'll review that and answer any questions. Now, as you know, a proposed Class 1 restaurant would be a byright use in the Business One District. No special permit would be required if the lot coverage by the structure were not being increased. The building itself, that is, the enclosed structure, is not being expanded. The lot coverage is increasing in order to provide a handicap-accessible ramp and a level surface for outside dining, that is, a deck. If the area between the building and Town Hall Square were not sloped, there could be outside dining, like other downtown restaurants, with no special permit required. Last month, the planning board granted a special permit for the increased lot coverage and issued a favorable site plan review decision, and you have those. At the last hearing on the case, board members asked for statistical information on which to grant a special permit to waive the parking. You also asked for information about other restaurants downtown, and specifically, you asked if there were other restaurants that had no private parking. So, we retained McMahon Associates, of which Jason, who is a Falmouth native, happens to be the general manager in Boston, and they are recognized traffic and parking experts. And we also carefully studied downtown restaurants and their seating and their parking counts. We actually visited every property downtown between Shore Street and the Village Green, and we studied the assessors' records and the building department records. And we also came to find out that downtown parking had been studied in depth recently, and a report was issued by the town's Traffic Management Committee in 2021. And all the information that we developed has been submitted to the board. Both the planning board in its referral back in November and the Chamber of Commerce, from which you received a letter today, believe that the proposed restaurant, which will be the 18th restaurant between Shore Street and the Village Green on Main Street, no exception being Timber, which is just off of Main Street, 18, 17 existing restaurants, this will be the 18th. In their conclusion, the planning board and the Chamber of Commerce said, and this has been agreed to by the consultants, is that it will generate little additional traffic or need for additional customer parking. And as the chamber's president wrote today, "The customers are already here." Mr. Casparian, Michael Casparian, intended to be here tonight to speak in favor of this. His wife is being honored tonight and giving a keynote address at a school function, and turns out he had to attend. He wrote me a note with the letter that he sent to you today. He said, "If it were not for this event, I would be attending the meeting to provide our enthusiastic support." And he ends his letter to me, saying, "We're looking forward to the ribbon cutting." There will be a restaurant inside the building in any case. Blue Moon has signed a lease that's, I think, for the rest of 20 years to run. And there'll be a restaurant in any case. The additional parking need generated by having the deck is described by the parking assessment as projected to be negligible. Blue Moon will make a good faith effort, and we've said this all along, to have its employees not park on the downtown streets in Town Hall Square or the other nearby public lots during peak business periods. This is a serious commitment. And as an indication of that, just yesterday, Blue Moon secured an arrangement with the Falmouth Historical Society to use its private staff parking lot at 65 Palmer Avenue, just off of Town Hall Square, within a three-minute walk of Town Hall Square, to park eight and maybe nine employee cars. This is an example of what is possible and what Blue Moon commits to try to do. Now, we can't make the restaurant development contingent on a specific arrangement that we've made. Historical Society may expand its building. We have no idea what it will do. But we will look for opportunities, even though the reports are that we will generate little additional traffic, to reduce the employee parking where it matters. Blue Moon employees can also use the peripheral lots farther from town that have been identified, both by the Traffic Management Committee and by the McMahon Report, such as at the Lawrence School Lot when school is not open. Carpooling will be encouraged. And Blue Moon has offered to report to the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, or both, about its employee parking arrangements every year. And note that Blue Moon is committing to try to reduce downtown employee parking, not just by the additional employees that are occasioned by having the outside deck, but for the entire restaurant. Most downtown restaurants, as our study has shown, and we've reported to you and given you the figures, most have little or no private employee parking. The key exceptions are La Civetta and Blue Finns. Blue Moon will be making the kinds of efforts that are specifically recommended by the Traffic Management Committee. John Richardi expects that the new restaurant will generate around $20,000 in meals tax just to Falmouth, about eight times that to the state, and his goal is to hit $25,000 for Falmouth. I want to comment about the use of access to the rear of the restaurant through 131 and 145 Main Street, which there's been a lot of discussion about. The arrangements offered by owners of those properties are not for restaurant deliveries, and that has never been Blue Moon's intent. We've never suggested that we intended to have delivery trucks access the rear of the restaurant that way. By far, most restaurants in the Business One District receive their supplies from trucks parked on streets or in public parking lots, and Blue Moon, with or without the deck, will be no different. Your file includes a letter from Gordon Food Service stating that deliveries will be made early in the morning, like they do to other restaurants. Blue Moon has no intention of having any vehicular access behind the restaurant unless for trash collection. You have Cavosa Disposal's letter stating that they've collected the trash from behind the businesses on Main Street for many years, and that they can collect the restaurant's trash without increasing trips. But if for any reason we're not able to do that, or decide that we just have a better solution for handling trash, there are other arrangements that can be made. Bogosian Development LLC owns the subject property, owns the property at 159 Main Street, and they own Timber, and they maintain a dumpster in the parking lot between my law office, right next door, and Timber. And that trash dumpster is emptied but once a week, early in the morning. As a matter of fact, I have never seen it being emptied, but they've told me it's emptied once a week, and they don't even fill it. So, it would be easy for the restaurant to bring its trash either right down Town Hall Square, early in the morning, or late at night, or there is a path that runs on the Bogosian property behind Timber that would go right from the restaurant property to where the dumpster is located. And so, the dumpster would be emptied a couple times a week, or three times a week, instead of now. And at that point, there won't be any required use of the access from the west behind the Main Street properties for the restaurant. Mark Bogosian has authorized me to make this representation about sharing that tax factor. I have a one-sentence letter from him. I'll give you just for your record, so you know that that's been discussed, and that can be done. Now, with the limited use of the rear access with the south end of the deck, as indicated on this plan, to be screened, I'm just going to show you where that is, right in this area, to provide a buffer for the residential abutters to the west, we think that those abutters, the residential abutters, can hardly claim that their rights will be adversely impacted. The condominium owners, the residential condominium owners, are left arguing that they have an access easement that will be blocked where the restaurant deck is proposed. In the appeal that they have filed from the Planning Board's special permit, their council has acknowledged that there are no recorded rights. The correspondence about the easement issue that I sent the board last week makes it clear that even if there were fact-based claims of continuous and uninterrupted adverse use lasting 20 years, which there have not been, such claims are outside the concerns of zoning. The burden of proof is on one claiming a prescriptive easement, and I've provided you with court cases that say so. And the claims must be made in court, not to the Board of Appeals. In fact, they can't even be made in a zoning appeal. I don't think that you've received a single case from the neighbor's attorney in support of the arguments that have been alleged about that easement. And the town council's office has advised that the abutters easement claims are not properly to be considered in a zoning hearing. I think it would be improper for you to take them into account. In closing, I do want to refer to one of the letters that you received this past week, and that's from the Gelfys, who own two businesses downtown, including one at 149 Main Street. And I hope, would ask that you read that letter. It's not very long, but that you would read that letter into the record, because I think it so clearly covers a bunch of the points. And then, either before you do that or after, I would like to introduce Mr. Adams, if you're ready to hear from him.
Do you have a handie?
I just, from a time perspective, we're probably coming up-
I have, there's numerous letters in the file. I actually have a problem with selectively choosing one to read and not the others.
You're all part of the file anyways. As long as the board members have read it, and the public, of course, can see it, that's fine.
I can say I read it, and I agree that it would not be appropriate to read all-
Thank you.
We got several letters in the last couple of days.
I'm looking at this, a letter I mentioned from Mr. Cavosa.
Thank you.
That's a one-sentence letter.
That, Incelies. And I have also a letter, I'll give you that, from Cavosa Disposal. It simply says that they have other ways of collecting the trash that don't require them to access the property through the way next to La Civetta and to the rear. But what we've come up with with sharing the dumpster just seems to be ideal.
Thank you. I think we're up around 15 minutes. Is there a motion to extend so that we can hear?
I'll second.
Right. Motion, thank you. Chair, second. Extend.
Good evening. Thank you for the extension of time. I'll be brief. Jason Adams with McMahon. We were hired to review the parking impacts of the proposed project. As Attorney Amet outlined, we reviewed the available parking in the downtown Falmouth area, and then we went through the effort of projecting the expected parking demand of the downtown Falmouth area with and without the proposed deck. So, we used data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers to understand the expected impact in terms of parking of the deck. That review, as Attorney Amet outlined, does indicate that the project would not have a significant impact on the amount of parking required in the downtown area, and we firmly feel that the amount of available parking would accommodate the parking demand associated with the deck. As Attorney Amet outlined, we would certainly recommend that the restaurant continue to work to find additional parking areas for staff, as are available, but overall feel as though the project would not significantly impact downtown parking.
Jerry?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Was it your letter that said that you anticipated six to seven, or six to eight, additional trips?
Additional parks. So, additional trips, yeah. It's-
Additional trips, additional parks.
Right. We were focused on parking, and as you all know, that the downtown Falmouth area does benefit from a lot of connectivity, both in visitors that travel to multiple spots and also the parking that can be shared. So, it's a bit of a challenge sometimes to understand exactly how many vehicles might be coming down to downtown Falmouth at any one given time, so we're really looking at like a theoretical difference, and that number ends up in that six to eight spaces at a given time.
Thank you. Frank?
Mr. Adams, the, just want to clarify that. We're talking really only about the requirement, the parking for the 56 additional seats that would be on the deck.
Correct.
The 74 that are in the restaurant are not part of our decision. But the six to eight cars, is that per hour?
That's at a-
How do you, is it per, in what context is six to eight?
At what we call a peak time. So, we typically evaluate a peak weekday time and a peak Saturday time. That's how the data allows us to evaluate the impact of a project. So, at, say, 5:00 PM on a Thursday, six to eight additional parks down here related to the deck.
So, during the evening hours, say, from 5:00 to 10:00, it's a constant six to eight? Is that what you're saying?
It's the, the data is focused on the singular peak, so maybe we could say it's six to eight or below that from that 5:00 to 10:00 time period.
In your study, you used the metric, or graph, or data, in one part, from high-turnover sit-down restaurants. I'm not so sure that that actually fits what we're talking about here and what we have on Main Street. And then further, on page nine, the data from the ITE that you used is for small shopping centers, and I hardly consider downtown Falmouth to be a small shopping center. I mean, it is distinct in and of itself, and I think these metrics that you use are off, as far as your study is concerned. I'm sorry, that's just, I mean, you can make a study say anything. And that's all I have for the moment, but I just want to point that out. And actually, one more thing. On page one, and of course, that was on page eight and nine, those two, on page one, there was the claim that the employee parking conditions, agreements, whatever you want, would offset the need for parking. That's a little hard one for me to swallow as well. That's all I have for the moment.
Suzanne?
This data or statistics was done in February 21?
That was the town's report, was from February 21, correct?
When was the data?
So, the data, and maybe I can speak to your points as well, because I understand that there's a certain amount of interpretation to the data. You know, the downtown Falmouth, every restaurant certainly is not a high-turnover sit-down restaurant, right? Like, some of those are a longer, a longer sit, but there are limitations within the data. So, we're trying to right-size the best choice of data. There are other land uses, but they're pretty big in how they catalog, such as, like, fine dining is another option compared to the high-turnover sit-down.
Can I just interrupt?
Absolutely.
I think that your data may work in the daytime hours, but I think that to say that it applies more than 25% at nighttime would be a stretch.
Yeah, and really, what we're trying to do is look at the whole of the area with and without the deck. I mean, that's our objective with the study. So, really, we're looking for the difference of a parking demand for downtown Falmouth without this particular deck and the 56 seats associated with it versus the parking demand of downtown Falmouth, and that's the whole of the downtown. My experience is typically you travel to the downtown to go to a restaurant. If one restaurant is busier than you might expect, you'd seek out another restaurant, not necessarily getting back into my car to travel, especially in the immediate area. Aim for Anjeho, and it's too busy, you might come across the street. So, it really does capture the idea that we're looking at the whole of the downtown area, just trying to understand what the difference in those parks are. So, it's, you know, I can't stand up here and say exactly how many parking spots are going to be required at any one time, that the data isn't available for that, especially as you look at downtown Falmouth. So, we're really just trying to catalog that as best we can.
There's another key point that you just mentioned, is that the data isn't available. We're seeking it now, and I'm not quite sure that what we're going to get, I'm not sure what it is to begin with, this traffic study is going to provide, parking study, but it's my feeling that we really need a parking saturation study. And I'm just going to go on. I mean, what spurs this whole thing in me is, before I was a member, I've said this before, before I was a member of this committee, every Monday I come to the selectmen's meetings I have for 20 years. On the Monday that you chose that you were here for the low-neutral bylaw, as is often the habit, they brought employees into the room, which is good. I mean, it shows, I'm all for everybody doing business. I mean, it's just great for the town. But that night, because of just the number of employees that they had here in the seats, I could not find a parking space in Town Hall Square, and that included me going out that once. I went around at least four times before I was able to get a parking space. That was, I believe, the first or second week in August. Again, I'm just going to keep going. The Planning Board basically threw this hot potato at us. Do you have the letter from the 9th of November from the Planning Board where they granted the waiver?
I'll look.
I think that's pertinent at this point. I'm sure it's November 9.
November 9. There's so many in here.
Yeah, there's, I can't really remember what letter was it.
Keep going, this way? Yeah, from a perspective, it's okay. Can you keep going while we-
Yeah, well, there's some points in that letter that I think are- Yeah. Well, there's some points in that letter that I think are pertinent.
This is like five inches thick, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big file.
Oh, there you go.
Got the one with the four bullet points?
Yes.
Can I have that, please?
It's here.
Okay. This is what we received on the 9th. The planning board is in favor of granting the request for total waiver of required parking. The reason being, there's four bullet points here, four reasons. Downtown Main Street parking is unique. The businesses located on Main Street have mainly used public parking that is available in the area. I mean, I think we all know that. I mean, that's hardly a reason to me to, you know, grant the waiver. The second bullet point is the competition for parking spaces is mostly experienced during the summer months. We all know that. In my opinion, that's not a reason for granting a waiver. The third point, the Chamber of Commerce has written a letter in favor of the request. I mean, that's good, but the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of all businesses, and God bless them, that's exactly what their job is. But again, I find that not to be a reason for the planning board to give a waiver. And the fourth point is the planning board members have experienced long wait times for tables during the high season and believe another restaurant in Main Street might help reduce that. Again, at most, that's a half a reason. And my point is, this is a hot potato, and they threw it at us. And I mean, if we don't deal with it now, we're certainly going to have to deal with it at some time in the very near future. And let me go on to, well, the, rather than have you look it up, this is the one. The parking regulations in Falmouth are from 240, chapter 240. And the zoning bylaws waives most parking requirements for the downtown because of the large amount of public parking spaces available. I say to you and everyone here that that is no longer true. This is outdated. And it's, we went on further, finding that in order to enhance economic vitality on the downtown Main Street, parking requirements might inhibit commercial and residential development. Well, that, I believe that's true, and they haven't, because we're right on the cusp of being overdeveloped. And that's just where I'm thinking. The traffic committee report that we all read, and I could be wrong about this, but I am right, that the traffic committee, number of them resigned because they felt that they weren't being listened to. Again, this is, this is, now it's in our purview, and we're the last line. And I just struggle with this. It's, now, there was a fire the other night, and of course, no one could get in or out because of the fire. And then it led me to think, if perhaps this deck were built, and that, whatever you want to call it, way, land, area, if the people that live in the condos happen down by La Cebeta, and as happens a lot in the summer, somebody picking in to take, picking up a takeout order, whatever, parks there and blocks that alley, where are those people going to park? They're going to come down, they're going to park in Town Hall, an overly overcrowded, already overcrowded Town Hall Square. Just where I'm coming from, I'm not against anybody being in business. But I think the time has come. I think the unlimited parking, as the regulations say, has far outlived its usefulness, and it's time to promulgate new regulations. And some of the recommendations that the traffic committee recommended, very few of them have been implemented. The past town manager tried to get an off-site, you know, another parking space down on Worcester Court and get a shuttle going, and it never happened. And as I say, the, some members of the transportation committee quit because they don't think they were listened to. I didn't see any, I see their report from 2021, but I don't see any current input from them. And I believe that they would be leaning towards thinking the way I am, or if not firmly. I'll let it go. I have a few other
Could you pass that letter down?
Suzanne?
Which one?
Yeah, the one, that, that one right there, the attorney gave.
The question I had was, was the data retrieved in the dead of winter?
No, no, the report was issued in February, but the data, and I'm not the source of every part of that February 2021 study. I mean, they're aggregating data, just like we're trying to, around the area. I know that they certainly concluded that there was an adequate amount of parking infrastructure in the area. I think one of the poignant points that was made in that study through survey, they identified that something around 75% of people were willing to walk up to five minutes to find a parking space within their destination area, and that 50% were willing to walk up to 10 minutes. So that's kind of where we focused our review of available parking, understanding that there are going to be cases where you're looking to park in Town Hall Square, and there is not a parking spot available. I mean, certainly, we understand that that is the case. But with the amount of parking in the area, there is a lot of available parking for someone that's willing to walk five or 10 minutes. And I understand that's not every visitor. But it's also important to understand that not every visitor to downtown, to this particular restaurant, to the deck, is going to be traveling in a passenger car. People will walk, people will bike, people could take a bus. I mean, there's a lot of ways to get into downtown Falmouth. I think that's what makes it so great, is that connectivity. So some of the people that would be on this deck are not going to be arriving in a car. So, you know, that demand, again, back to the point of how many additional parks, it gets smaller and smaller as you think about how people would arrive, how someone might be traveling just to find a restaurant that they enjoy, or someone that's traveling to go somewhere else in downtown Falmouth and decides to stop in to the deck to have a meal. Not all the people coming into that area would be coming specifically to go to the deck of this particular restaurant. So it's really like important for us to view the whole of the area. And that is why we feel that this parking impact specific to the deck is quite insignificant within the context of downtown Falmouth.
When did they ask all these people if they were willing to walk five minutes or 10 minutes?
I, again, I'm not sure. It wasn't, it wasn't our study that we, that we did, but that was done by, by the Falmouth Transportation Committee. I believe it's been submitted.
So it's got to be pretty old, then. It wouldn't happen during COVID?
They still could have had a survey. Again, I'm not positive how that survey was undertaken, whether it was through electronic correspondence or not.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Just a quick question. There's been, there's plenty of questions that you've been asked or thought processes. Your review, in essence, is a theoretical review. You didn't have boots on the ground, people out there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, kind of counting spots, obviously.
Right. That's the approach we have to take for anything that is not currently built. We can only do a theoretical review, right?
Thank you very much.
Can I just follow up?
Yes, Jerry?
For practical purposes, and then the opponents may have others, are you considered a subject matter expert in transportation and parking?
Me personally?
The company who ever signed the letter?
Yes. I'm a professional engineer. I'm a professional traffic operations engineer. So essentially, the highest accreditation that the state of Massachusetts allows.
Thank you.
And I've been, right, at this for over 20 years.
So you just took Falmouth Transportation Committee's reporting and reviewed it?
We looked at pieces of that. We did our own analysis of the parking demand. That was the focus.
Online analysis.
Using, using
Data.
Industry-wide data. This is, the approach we took is the approach we would take for any other development. We certainly applied an understanding of the downtown Falmouth area. Attorney Ament and his staff went through an extensive effort of helping to understand how many restaurants and how much retail is available here so that we can understand the whole complexity of the downtown area.
Thank you.
Great.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Ament before we go to public comment?
No, I don't. I'm sorry, I don't.
Public comment?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, please.
Doing the IT.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mary Downey, and I'm here for the residents behind the proposed project. What I would like to start with, I hope they can hear me through the mic, maybe, because I need this assistance.
Okay.
All right. Just have to get back to this one.
Can't open the file.
Sorry. I will, I think I will try to just get it. Something. Our IT person is missing. I don't know what we're
Were these some of the pictures that you previously?
I have shown some previously.
Oh, okay, some, okay.
But I do have others that I wanted to have up here. But if I, I don't need to have them. If, maybe we can get back to this.
Are the old pictures on there by any chance?
The old pictures are on there.
Well, you can at least use those.
And, let's see.
If you can remember which one you have.
Yep, it's, I have plans, two plans and photos.
Her apologies.
It's just coming up that they can't read it. So, but anyway, thank you, Richie. Richie's one of my clients and a tenant at 137. I would just like to say that there is no requirement to pass a special permit, as you know, and that a special permit is special. And it's special for an appropriate project, and this project does not rise to that level. By definition, a special permit makes an exception from the bylaw for the project because it benefits the neighborhood and the town. This proposal is not special in that manner. It includes trespass on my client's property. I would have been able to show you their property. In order for Carvosa to get over there, they have to trespass on my client's property. The McDonald's have given a conditioned agreement for seven and a half feet that they have access to, but they cannot give the seven and a half feet that my clients are deeded. And they're, and that is an absolute. There are trespass, fire, safety hazards, overcrowding downtown, traffic jams at the most congested intersection in Falmouth. No deliveries except from, from Town Hall Square on this project or Main Street. They're going to drag ice, ice-covered fish through the front of this restaurant, and it'll only be until early hour, only early hours in the morning. It doesn't make sense. That's not how fish deliveries work. No service to the back. They could have service to the back. They could have service along the side. They have a side entryway that would be covered by the deck. We keep talking about the deck, but they don't talk about the way, and the way does exist. We have been maligned for saying we have prescriptive rights and we have all these deeded rights. There's a deed that reserves, and this has been filed with the Superior Court after the planning decision, that states from in the human's block to what is now the coin shop, that there is a reservation for certain owners and others. Others is a term of art in a deed. Who are the others? They change over time. They change as the way system changes. La Cebeta, on the other hand, has, there's no ability for anyone to get prescriptive rights. The first time prescriptive rights came into this, Attorney Ament brought in prescriptive rights. He can establish his prescriptive rights, but there is a document on La Cebeta's property that says no prescriptive rights can be achieved on that property. This has been a consented to way system. It blocks a 100-year-old way that is essential to its own business, meaning Blue Moon should keep this, have their access, keep the cooperative nature of this system. Don't block it. This project is detrimental, and it should not be given a permit. The restaurant wants a 100% total parking waiver. In the last, well, a couple of weeks ago, it was 100 pages of all of these studies. And I'm trying to say, where's Falmouth in all of this? Where are we? We're not a shopping center. We're a unique, beautiful town. It is a restaurant destination. I hope they get their restaurant. I think their idea is beautiful, but it takes away from the safety of the individuals who live in the rear, and also, I submitted letters this week, individuals who rent from the McDonald's, who want to keep their parking spaces, who want to keep their access by McDonald's, if they ever came up with a license, which they have not, it's only, it looks like an emailed agreement that someone sent to them, and they crossed out the portion of the employee parking. It's not a license, which would be required for this to meet some of your zoning criteria. And there, I do not, having been here myself for over 60 years, I do not think that any recent proposals have gone through with no parking, absolutely no parking and no deliveries. We know what it's like with these 18-wheelers pulling down Main Street. It's very dangerous, and backing onto Main Street, it just doesn't make any sense. The McMahon parking analysis is a generic, national, he's using national codes for shopping malls, and the numbers are only for the seats on the deck. So we're not studying the entire restaurant. That's what a real parking and traffic study would do. They'd look at the whole impact of this spot. These numbers are skewed. Estia was the last major restaurant approved five years ago. It has at least 19 spaces on site, a driveway for on and off deliveries. It was able to take on the extra traffic that COVID caused in terms of having to go into the takeout service. And they could do it because they had the proper parking area to do that. I've been down below and seen the trucks that come in there to unload. They're massive, the food trucks that are in there. CBA, in addition to the parking, when you're talking about a special permit, you must consider the adequacy and the suitability of the entire site, not just the parking issue, when you're considering this kind of a special permit. This site has no access to the food trucks that are in there. ZBA, in addition to the parking, when you're talking about a special permit, you must consider the adequacy and the suitability of the entire site, not just the parking issue, when you're considering this kind of a special permit. This site has no access to the back of its building. It shuts off access to four other businesses that are there. It degrades the site for fire and safety. For a special permit, it must improve the site. It degrades the site for access and service. For a special permit, it must improve the site. It degrades for traffic circulation, and I'm repeating myself, but ingress and egress. From two means of access, the project reduces all to one nine-foot way beside Estia. That's it. The site has no means for trash pickup without trespassing over my client's property. The Planning Board's decision should be given no deference by your board. You must look at the situation with your own eyes and common sense. That's what I did from the beginning when they came. My position hasn't changed. My curbstone logic told me you cannot block a way by going through these bylaws. You must establish your right to do so by another granting authority, whether it's a court, whether it's the Board of Selectmen. Someone has to eliminate this way, and it has not been done properly. And I submit that Attorney Ahment is a wizard when it comes to these bylaws. I had to, I had a weekend to get ready for my first meeting, and they are quite complicated, but we did get through them. And I'm nowhere near a wizard, but I can see the adequacy of the site. It's too small for what they want to do. That's why they're expanding the footprint, altering the footprint. None of that was addressed by the Planning Board.
Excuse me one second. We've got about one minute left.
I'll go prepaid, no, okay. I just want to make sure I hit everything. The Planning Board has no such authority to permit construction in a way without proper determination, whether it's a court or another, or the town, or the building commissioner, who has already weighed in that he cannot give a permit without a court order to begin this project. And after the first hearing, we knew that there was opposition, when the Planning Board knew there was opposition in the neighborhood, it was clear that this issue was blocking a way. They scheduled a visit on November 9th. We were lucky to make that visit. We were not noticed of that visit, and it was absolutely a fait accompli. But the chairman came flying down by La Cibetta and parked a car right in front of my client's property, trespassing on her property. Now, it's either a shared common way system, and they all work together, or no trespass, no trespasses are going to start to issue, and there will be so many problems that result from shutting off this way. The last fire, there was a fireman, a man who talked about it being absolutely necessary to have two means of egress and ingress right there. When the fire did check in on the Planning Board request, they were only checking in on the percentage of increase on the lot site, not on whether they could block the way. And so many times throughout this, there have been, the question that went to Town Council, absolutely off the mark. They could have asked, can they block this way? Why didn't they just ask that? But they didn't. It was a convoluted question, and I don't know who approved the question. So, thank you very much, and I'm sorry I couldn't...
Hold on for one second.
I add a couple of things, and I know your clients are very concerned about this, but, you know, we have to try to base things on the facts that are before us, and not necessarily, I shouldn't use the word supposition, but the police have accepted this. The fire department has accepted it. Did you go back to the fire department after the Estia fire and ask them to reconsider? As far as I know, the fire department has signed off on this. The additional thing is, I believe the building commissioner said he will wait until he has all the relevant information before he will issue, make a decision on the building permit. So, and then finally, the Planning Board, we have to look at site plan review. It's not optional for us, and I would defer to other members. We have to incorporate any of their concerns into our permit. And you, I think you were CC'd with a letter from Town Council. Do you agree that this board has no legal authority or competent legal authority to determine rights of way on that easement? I mean, that sort of came through a number of times. It was also said in the Planning Board.
Well, I would say that the Town Council spoke to the question that was given to her, and she did not specifically, these special permits are within your discretion. You can do what you want.
I agree, and I am pointed, because it's a difficult decision.
Yes.
Town Council, who is our legal advisor, we could, we could ignore Town Council. We generally don't, but she speaks for the town, that person speaks for the town.
Yes.
I believe, unless you have something in there to counter it, that it was clear to us in the Planning Board that you have to go before a competent jurisdiction to determine your issues of trespassing in the right of way. I'm not trying to make a decision one way or the other. That's outside our bounds.
Except that, you know, Attorney Ahment has had so much time, airtime, et cetera, on this case, and he put in, he's asking you to look at case law, and so I did look at the case law. And one of the things about a way that exists on the town assessor's sheets that has existed there since it has been here, is that you, if you have a way, you must offer an alternative way for the parties to pass, and that's in one of his...
Have you submitted your own legal analysis to support your opinion? I know you disagree with Attorney Ahment.
I just thought...
Well, no, I just, we have to deal...
I'm not supposed to fight a legal battle in front of you, and so I find it peculiar that we can and I can't...
I'm sorry. It's not, we're not fighting a legal battle here. So, all the questions of easements, trespassing, are not necessar, cannot be in front of us. Sorry.
Okay, fine. Frank, any questions?
No, sir.
Mark, questions?
Aside from the obvious, it's been stated and dictated, if you will, to us that we can't make any determinations on these, the ways and any of those boundaries or whatever. We can make the determination on the parking. I mean, that's why we're here, to grant this waiver and, or not. This is a problem. I mean, the parking in this town isn't, doesn't match when the original bylaws were enacted. There isn't an abundance of parking anymore. And we have to take into consideration the deck, the restaurant, and every other restaurant on Main Street, and everyone else who contributes to the parking problem that we have. Two years ago, when they brought forth the Traffic Management Committee study, which, as again, I have to say, they felt they weren't paid attention to, there was a great deal of talk of building a parking garage behind Peg Noonan Park in the parking lot now. I mean, you just cannot deny that we have a parking issue, and I'll just use this analogy. When is the lifeboat filled? And who's going to make that, if we don't have to make that decision this time, it's going to be the next one that comes here, because I think it's obvious to everyone. It's time. I mean, I was put here to do what I think is right, and I think we have a parking issue. There's no, it's not the, you know, inhibiting business or whatever the way it was, and obviously, the old regulations worked well. Look at downtown. It's thriving. But again, I just go back to, I mean, whatever, we're a seaside town. When's the lifeboat full? And the evidence to me is...
Do we have a question here? I mean, this is not for debate. Do we have a question of the attorney? It's not, we can debate those points, and I'm sure you will, but this period is a ques, through you, Mr. Chair.
That's, that's fine. Do you have a question, or the statement is complete, Mark?
Um, that's complete for now.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne?
I'm all set, all set.
Thank you all very much, and I hope that you will deny the project's request.
Is there any other, sorry. Thank you. Any other public comment on this?
Jerry Millitt, 137, Main Street, right behind. This project, I mean, I hear them talking about good faith efforts for employee parking. Good faith efforts aren't enforceable. What's kind of a veteran employee that's going to work a double shift and just find the closest spot they can. He has a commitment from one vendor to deliver off-hours. There's only two restaurants in town that have one vendor. That's McDonald's and Burger King, and they also have parking. And the fire at Estia and the fire at Bean and Co. in the last eight months, the only way out was that way. I don't, I don't see how the fire department, the police department can approve this project, because that way is blocked. Restaurants have a lot of fires. You don't need to do a study for that. There's open plain. And there's, there's no parking. I mean, it's going to be the biggest restaurant in town with no parking. The last meeting, Mr. Ahment referenced, the French Bakery is a restaurant with no parking. I went in there the other day. It's not much of a restaurant, no servers. There's not one table or chair in the French restaurant, the bakery. It's a to-go place. There are no restaurants with no parking, especially one of this size. And it does have a name, Hewans Way. I also submitted to the Planning Board in writing, from the Marzouts, they were approached by Bogosian to sign away the rights to the way. I guess that fell on deaf ears. That is in the folder. Why would they, why would they want them to sign away the rights to the way? And I know that's why we have to go to Barnstable Superior Court to get some objective people. Like, here are the facts. They approached them to sign away the rights. They didn't sign away the rights. It's in writing from Charlie Marzo. Thank you.
Or discussion? Oops, sorry.
My name is Stephen Lake. I'm in the Swing Lane, Falmouth. My father did business in this town. I've done business in this town. My brother has done business in this town. On the side of where the deck should be, I've seen maybe one car parked there. Chivrix has no parking. The seafood sushi bar, there's no parking. I had a very busy gas station. If the pumps are full, the people go by. If they're at a restaurant and the street's full, they will go by. I think it's very unfair to say parking, because there is not enough parking in this town, and there never will be. And I spoke with Mr. Rashadi today about deliveries, and I think he agreed they will all be done at his other restaurant, so the trucks don't have to bring fish through the front door. And that will resolve trucks where other restaurants have deliveries on Main Street. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or discussion? Jerry?
I think the Planning Board, who is the official board to acknowledge it, has said they're going to conduct a parking study, okay? I think, as a member of this board, we don't bring any expertise in parking, engineering, law, or anything else. We have to rely on what is brought before us. The Planning Board has approved site plant review. We have no legal authority, as I said before, to make a determination of the easement. This will probably go to court one way or the other, but we should protect the town's interests as to we're acting within our authority. My opinion of how busy downtown is, is an opinion. We have it. We have a subject matter expert. We haven't seen any testimony that rebuts it. So, although, as unfortunate as it is, I think we can approve this with some extensive conditions that should be enforceable. But that's always the conditions in how to enforce it. We're not the parking police. Thank you.
I find that this case is really solely about the waiver of the parking requirement under the zoning bylaw. We spent an awful lot of time at the various hearings discussing this right of way, and I frankly don't find that to be a relevant issue. The ZBA has no authority to make determinations about rights of way or easements by prescription or anything like that. There's a process to do it, but it's not here before this board. It's subject to the land court or the Superior Court or some other place. Furthermore, there's nothing in terms of criteria in our zoning bylaw or the zoning enabling act that I found that requires us to make a determination about easements or rights of way as part of the zoning decision. So, I have, will suggest, if the board is inclined to grant this special permit, to request some language be added to the decision, I'm just going to briefly read it so that people will know what I'm thinking, that this decision and the privileges it confers upon the applicant does not authorize any party to interfere with or violate the private property rights of others, including abutters and neighbors. So, if there is something that has created a right of way, and if the creation of this deck would violate some private party's rights to use that way, a court will have to make that determination, but will make it very clear that this board's decision is not authorizing anybody to violate the private property rights of another. I think it is also, in the case of a special permit, sort of the, not necessarily obligation, but it's the focus of the ZBA to advance the objects and purpose of the zoning bylaw. This is a business one zoning district. It's a very special district. It is limited in its geography to the downtown Falmouth area, I think perhaps the downtown Woods Hole area and a few other places. Businesses are allowed to come right up to the sidewalk. They're businesses. There's no separation between buildings. Parking is all provided by, almost all is provided by the town, the public parking. There are other restaurants in Falmouth where there are, there is some dedicated private property, but none, no significant private parking is provided anywhere in downtown. There may be a few spaces out behind, a few spaces off the site, but nothing significant. Almost every restaurant in downtown Falmouth relies upon public parking. Also, a class one restaurant is a use that is allowed by right in this district, and it's been pointed out that the 74 seats inside require no consideration from this board with respect to parking. So, what we're really talking about is the 56 tables that are going to be outside, and we're having a long discussion about parking when really we're only trying to accommodate the number of people who will be filling up 56 seats. And Mr. Adams was here tonight, and he submitted a report earlier, and tonight he said that during peak hours, maybe eight or 10 cars at peak time are involved. Sometimes, when you hear the discussion, you'd think there are going to be hundreds of cars. Well, the restaurant's not going to be that successful. Even under the best of circumstances, we're talking maybe about eight or 10 cars at a peak, at a peak, peak time. The Transportation Management Committee, which is now, I think, called the Transportation Committee, minus some of its members, is Mr. minus some of its members, as Mr. Finneran has pointed out, did not necessarily conclude that more parking was necessary downtown. Rather, they took issue with the way the existing parking had been managed. And it's not our responsibility to take care of the town's management of existing parking, although I think if we were to suggest to the town that it ought to be done, it ought to be considered, it would be fair. So, um, and I would also suggest that if there's not enough parking, if it's determined there's not enough parking, and the determination will not come by a study, it will be, it'll come by people driving around looking for a parking space. If they don't find it, they'll go somewhere else. So, uh, I'm not really, I, I really think that the parking issue will kind of almost resolve itself. So I would be willing to grant this special permit, and as Mr. Patamas has mentioned, there are a number of conditions that ought to be put onto the decision to protect the town, and also to, the applicant has, has agreed to some of them. And this is also, I think, if, if we're going to have a positive vote here, which will be determined later, that this might be a good opportunity to ask the zoning administrator to prepare a draft decision or vote for consideration before the vote. Thank you.
First off, I, I completely disagree with Mr. Patamas. We were put here as individual members for our skills, abilities, and judgment. They hardly consider, or would consider that all of us have to be traffic management specialists or any other kind of specialist. They want us to use our own judgment. It's dictated because of the number of seats that they request that they come before us and ask for a parking waiver. And it's our duty to weigh all the information and decide whether that's warranted or not. I, I don't think anybody can argue that there's an issue with parking downtown. I completely understand we can't make our decision on ways and rights of ways or any other. That's for another court. But, as I say, my first experience with this was the flow-neutral bylaw. I could not find a place to park in downtown. I mean, I'm here two nights a week. Um, you know, what am I going to, take my bicycle? I mean, downtown is, and I'm not, sorry, I, I don't want to appear that it's a selfish, uh, statement. There are selfish statements that I'm making, but again, I'm just going to go back to, at what point is the lifeboat full? At what point is the parking saturated? I mean, that obviously has to be considered, and it's going to be sometime in the very near future. Are we going to kick the can down the road like the planning board kicked that to us? Or are we going to do what we're supposed to do? And I...
I, I see it as too much, and then, I mean, the, the normal rule of thumb is, I mean, let's... The traffic study used metrics that don't apply to this town at all, small shopping center, high turnover restaurants. That's not what we're talking here. I think there's a parking problem downtown, and I think everybody's seen evidence of it, and it needs to be addressed. Where I am.
I also agree that we, we're not touching the right-of-way easement, whatever we're calling it. It's not in our purview. We're only here for parking. I would have felt more comfortable if I had seen the lease with the Historical Society. I don't even know who owns that property. I don't know if any of you people do. I don't, I looked at, it's just a letter from a human. But I don't know who, I don't know if it's historical that owns it or if it's the town that owns it. If there's a lease, how, how are we going to make sure these employees? At one hearing, we heard eight. At another hearing, we heard 15. Then we heard 40. I don't know how many employees there are going to be.
Attorney Ahmed, could you respond, please?
You never heard 40 employees from the applicant. Mr. Rashadi is here. He said that there could be, in his time, up to 20, um, and not usually that.
Top is 20?
Yes.
On a per-shift basis? Total employees is 20. How about on a per-shift basis? Do we know?
It'll change between the peak times.
Just trying to understand. The agreement that you potentially have, because there's no term on it, how those eight spaces roughly a shift, I guess is my question.
We have an agreement with the owner of the property, which is the Falmouth Historical Society, a rather ancient Massachusetts corporation that owns the properties off the town green. As you know, they own property that extends between Palmer Avenue all the way back to Kathleen Bates. They have parking lots along Kathleen Bates. That is not the parking lot we're talking about. We're not talking about a parking lot that is used by the public. We have an agreement in writing signed by the Executive Director, a lease agreement that allows the use of the parking space behind the Conant Building, which is westerly of their buildings. After four, and they may make it more valuable, but what's in writing is after four weekdays, all weekdays throughout the year, and on weekends and holidays when their staff is not there, we put it down at 10 o'clock in the morning all day long until one hour after the restaurant closes. So it's a pretty darn good agreement for us to have arranged. It is, it can be canceled on months, a couple of months' notice. The, um, there is a financial component to it. The Historical Society is very pleased to, to have arranged this. They did it with the help of the Chamber of Commerce. But as I said, um, you know, we can't be sure that this will be available forever for the term of the lease, but it's an indication of the efforts we're willing to make. We've also had conversations with, with other parties who can provide parking downtown, very close to downtown. And, um, we have confirmed in writing through the Chamber of Commerce, because they have it in writing, that the school lots are open to the public when school is not in session. So these are significant portions, most of the peak periods of, uh, you know, the restaurant activity. We, and, and that's, so eight spaces, and eight is fewer than the, the Historical Society thinks we can park there, but I wanted to be sure it was...
I went down and drove around that little parking lot, and it looked like nine to me, and it's squeezing in and out.
I think eight's about right. But we will encourage carpooling. There will be some employees who live close enough to, to walk. We have proposed offers of off-site parking right from the beginning on Scranton Avenue. I've told you that, that the public parking along the bike path off Depot Avenue is a seven to eight-minute walk. The Lawrence School is six-minute walk. We will report to you. We will do everything we can to at least, we can't take care of, of customer parking, but we will make the kind of good faith effort that is recommended by the town's Traffic Management Committee, and nobody else is doing, but we will do it. It was recommend, the Estia, which was granted, you know, allowed 194-seat restaurant with 16 parking spaces. They have 15 plus three takeout spaces. None for employees, all by your decision, only for customers, so they have no employee parking. You know, they, they said they would do it, and maybe they are doing it. But we're willing to report to you on an annual basis, and we're willing to do it because we want to get the restaurant approved and make sure that at least all of those, the employee parking, which is a good chunk, won't be there. And I just want to say that the, frankly, um, I don't think that this restaurant is going to make any difference, any noticeable difference in the problem. And I'm as familiar as anybody with parking downtown because my office has been in Town Hall Square for 50 years.
I appreciate your comments. We're, we're trying to, you can...
Yeah, but I just want to say that I, we have a problem, but the solution is not to, as Mr. Finneran said, to, to, to cut off.
Mr. Chair, this is a discussion amongst us. I guess we did ask...
Well, we, we did ask for some additional information.
Thank you.
You may want to close the hearing. You wanted to...
I, well, depending on how we go, maybe we want to keep the hearing open until we see which way it's going and give people an opportunity. What way? If we close the hearing, how does it get reopened again?
Game over.
Say again?
Game over if we close it?
I don't know. I think we could turn around. I'm sorry, Frank.
Yeah, he would...
Well, I, I'm not, well, it can be reopened, but I think it's a difficult process. And if we can avoid closing it until we're absolutely certain we've got all the information, I suggest we do that.
I mean, I, I'll lend my comments here also. It's, my, my frustration here is that we want to have the employees and the management team not take up any additional parking spots. And I would like to see kind of, as, as you outlined, Jerry, a kind of a robust agreement that, that outlines that there really is parking, not a May, or it's, it's good for a month. So that, that is a portion that I'm struggling as a condition, correct?
I think the only thing we could put in the condition is a condition that employees, well, there's no parking available. So that put in an affirmative condition, and as Mr. Ahmed suggested, they report back periodically, whether it be quarterly, biannually, or annually, and we'll have discussion by the board.
It could also be that, and it's, maybe the restaurant could have each employee sign something that, attesting to that they're not going to be parking in the immediate area.
It's just not enforceable, right?
It's, a lot of things aren't necessary. I mean, it's what we can do. Uh, we can put something in, and then, you know, we can try to... We're not the enforcement agency here. It's the building department who's probably the next one up if this goes forward.
Is there, is there any more board discussion prior to having a vote?
I got a comment. Um, it's Mr. Amant just admitted that there's a problem, and he said that not adding to the problem isn't a solution. I mean, that makes no logical sense to me. The, the, the restaurant is by right. The extra is not. And, um, this falls on us. And I mean, I'm honestly at the spot where are we going to do our job or not?
Do you have a...
I had a problem that this board asked Mr. Amant to do a traffic study, and we were denied. And when you bring the biggest restaurant onto Main Street...
What, what, what did we get? I don't know if we were denied...
Parking study, parking analysis.
Scott asked, actually, for it.
Okay, but I know we did get something from...
We did get something today from...
And the planning board has said they plan on doing such a thing. At one of the hearings, they had mentioned that there's, I don't know if it's, maybe it's an afterthought, maybe they've been thinking about it. But I mean, I, you know, I don't know.
That's all I have.
Frank?
I'm just going to make a comment, and this is not a statement of the law or anything, as I understand it, but a number of years ago, this board received an application to build property on a pond. The neighbors all showed up and said the pond's polluted because all the septic systems are polluting the pond. So the board said, oh, the pond's polluted, denied the permit. We go to court, and the decision, or the comment made was, wait a minute. You're going to penalize the last guy to come along and deny his permit because everybody else has contributed to the problem in front of them? That's not fundamentally fair. I think it's the responsibility of the town, the planning board, and the town of Falmouth to solve these parking problems, not necessarily for us to hang on this applicant.
Keep it short. We're going to...
And why logically do they throw this on our lap unless it's not our decision? I mean, that's just, there's an incongruence in your statement.
It's a discretionary decision based on the facts, not necessarily our personal opinion. Our personal opinion, I think, have always been advised as secondary. We can offer what our experience is, but it, it's, you know...
We have, I think, we had some discussion.
Yeah, we had discussion. I don't know if it's...
Motion by the board. Close the hearing. What's the, what's the motion? Oh, sorry. Attorney Ahmed, for a second. I'm sorry.
Yes, we have a problem, and it's great. I wouldn't want to do away with it. I love how exciting downtown is. I love the vibrancy of people being here and it being crowded. And we put up with it for a relatively short period of, of the year. And we all know we have that problem, and we can do things as the traffic management people to make it better, and we're willing to do that. We're willing to do our share. Our anticipation is that we will keep a record of where people park every single day and have that information. But it is not fair, as Mr. Duffy was saying, to say we can't have this deck, and we really only need it because of the slope. We're not adding to the floor area of the restaurant. And any other restaurant without this slope wouldn't have this problem. So yeah, there's a problem, and sometimes it's hard to find parking, although I know, well, we have some private spaces. I think it's great.
Can we ask for a draft decision before we vote? Is that possible?
Well, I think you need to...
I don't know what the decision is.
You need to identify...
Assuming a positive, assuming a positive draft decision that we can vote, up or down?
I'd like that. I'd be in favor of a, make a recommendation that the zoning administrator draft a positive decision for review.
The motion, is that seconded?
Seconded.
An assumed motion? How do you come to an assumed motion if we haven't had a vote?
A motion based upon the assumption that we will vote.
Does that mean we continue and review it next meeting?
Yes, we, we review our draft conditions. Sometimes we share it with the attorney. Sometimes we don't. It's...
No, we'll bring it in to discuss it here at this table.
Yeah. Because part of it is, I, I don't want to get into possibility, but I think it's a way forward. Draft a positive.
Seconded. Have a vote?
I, I'm not comfortable with this.
Just procedurally, I guess.
Yeah, but it moves us down the road. It makes an assumption that with no basis...
It's just a draft for us to review at a future date, right? These discussions can continue at that point.
And it could, we could change it, or we could change the conditions to address some of your concerns.
We've been at it for an hour and a half. I'm just trying to...
I, I agree. Could I call for a vote?
Gives us more time to review our thought process.
How do I call for a vote?
I just did.
I, Jerry Patamas, vote aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Tough one. I, I can read the draft.
That's right. I, I vote also aye. For a draft, for you to develop a draft decision for us to review, to continue the hearing.
No, I, I'm assuming she has enough information. We don't have to go into, other than maybe specific language that Frank is adding about sometimes when we have a draft decision, we advise zoning administrator as to points.
We've had significant discussion on conditions already. We've had significant discussion on conditions already. I think you've got notes on them.
I would, I just want to make sure it's, because the hour's getting late.
To your point, that the conditions have to be fairly robust and accountable, that they're measurable so that we can understand exactly what is going to happen with parking.
So shall I make a motion to continue?
Do the debate.
The earliest we'd be able to do would be May 4th.
Attorney Ament, May 4th. He's saying yes.
Ms. O'Donnell, too?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue to, May?
Fourth.
May 4th.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want the draft shared in advance or not?
Shared among the board, yes.
Yes.
What about the attorneys?
No.
Us first.
Us first.
About our town council? No.
No.
No, okay, just us, okay.
The hearing is closed. Thank you for your time.
It's continued, right?
Continued.
The hearing was continued.
Hearing is continued.
Continued.
I'll give it away. Thank you. Yeah. Five-minute break, please.
We'll resume our meeting. Welcome back, everyone. Next up on the agenda is a continuation, hearing number 14-23 Robinson, 594 Palmer Avenue, requesting a special permit to convert the gift shop into an accommodation. The voting members on this are the regular voting members, and this hearing was previously open for the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Patrick Cook representing Ms. Robinson and Frederick Williams' house. We're, before you seeking a change of usage of the gift shop, the gift shop's a structure that's been on the property at 594 Palmer Ave, predates Ms. Robinson's ownership of it, which was, goes back to 2002. So the structure itself has been there for a significant period of time. There was a porch put on the back of it sometime around 2004, and the structure itself has been there since then. She did work with the town to have it serve as a gift shop, the thought being, hey, try to have people who are on a bike path, you know, and that. But as she continues to ply her trade as a small business person here in Falmouth, she believes that the more optimal use of this is to, can it be an additional accommodation space? Since we initially, this, you know, our second, second visit with you, since the time when we seen you last, the building permit has been filed and completed and is being held by the building department pending the outcome here. The, there was a number of open permits that we learned about, that all of which have been addressed and closed. And the boundaries of the property have been staked, including the parking spaces. She's required to have at least eight parking spaces on the property. She actually has 12 spaces there, so parking capacity is, we don't believe is, and what offer is not an issue. Sewage capacity is more than sufficient, based on the size of system that was installed before, to handle the minimal additional demands. There are, what we learned while staking is that there's a number of property, there's two property boundary issues that predate, actually, Ms. Robinson's ownership of the property. Those, one is in litigation, one will likely soon be in litigation. And as I offered to you, that the outcome of those is outside of our, of the purview here. But I do want to show you what that looks like, just because the question is, I believe is, does it impact the viability of what's being, what's being sought here? And this plan here shows a lot of different lines, because there's a lot of different things going on here that isn't, you know, it goes back to a long time ago and how things got from A to B. But here, this here is the gift shop that she's looking to have. And I think it's important to note, she's not looking to change anything about the outside of the four walls of the structure. So everything that's looking to happen here is inside and then change what the use is for, from the gift shop to an accommodation. And I only, I only show this just because even if everything that's afoot goes counter to the interests of Ms. Robinson and Frederick Williams' house and a property here at 594 Palmer Ave, none of it impacts the viability of what she's asking to do. So there are certainly issues. And again, one of them is in litigation, the other one I believe will be near term. So without speaking about them, you know, anymore, and as, as the, where those property lines actually fall and whatnot is outside, like the purview with the zoning question here, I just wanted to show this to see that there, despite whatever may or may not happen on this line, whatever may or may not happen on these lines, all of it is outside, excuse me, it doesn't impact the viability of the question that she's asking about the usage of this, this structure here, which again, has been here well over 10 years, it's been there, it predates her ownership in 2002. She, being a small business person here with the busy season coming, she, it would be optimal for her to be able to have this complete, there's still a window of time, to have the work complete prior to the beginning of the busy season. And it's nice to, it'd be nice to have the property, you know, in operating fashion before that time. The business is longstanding in and of itself. She's been operating as an inn for a significant period of time. And the track, the access to the property was a part of the original special permit when she saw it, so there's, it's able to take incoming and outgoing traffic there. And we believe that, and I think I can offer credibly, that this one, the minor addition that she's seeking for the accommodation, isn't going to change the character of the business as she's operating there, or have a significant impact on the, on the surrounding area. It, you know, will be one more place to have people stay, but there's already a number of places there as it is. So really, we hope, we're hoping that this, the question that we're asking and what we're seeking is understandable, it seems reasonable, and is something that you, the board can look on favorably. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you would have any.
We'll start with you.
Thank you. Just confirm, please, so eight parking spots, but you have 12, correct?
That's correct.
You're looking at having eight bedrooms total, currently there's seven?
That's correct.
And just, just give me a little more color. What's the building permit status?
The building permit has been, the application's been complete, and it's my understanding, and I tell you that on purpose, that they haven't issued it because they're waiting to see what happens here, that it's actually authorized to their, that this, because it's an alteration to the structure, it requires this approval. So that's what they're waiting for, to issue the permit.
And then, as you said, a lot of these setbacks and, and a lot of issues, that's going to get.
It's going to get worked.
Wherever.
Yep, and they're real things. I'm not minimizing the importance of it to people. It's their house, it's their, it's right there in our life, so those are, those are real. And I've had discussions with some of them, good people, and, you know, something's got to get worked out, and it will, but it doesn't impact, I offer to you, either any worst-case scenario, all worst-case scenarios, the viability of what she's looking to do.
Be a good outcome for everybody to get together. Thank you.
Is it still going to be a business?
Yes.
It'll be in the main house? In the main house?
Yes. I mean, I want to make sure I understand your question.
Is there still going to be a, like a gift shop-y type?
Oh.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please. This is the proprietor, Ms. Robinson.
Hi, I'm Jen Robinson. It's nice to meet you. Thank you for taking the time to hear us today. We will not be having that, a gift shop that's separate in any way. We used to sell ice cream and water to bicyclists on the, on the path. During COVID, it was non-existent, and I didn't want the structure itself just to kind of deteriorate.
So the only thing will be available to people inside that are, that are customers already that are inside. There will be like, there's like sodas and stuff available to the guests.
To the guests. And, and we have like t-shirts that say Falmouth that, that travelers can purchase.
Again, for the people that are guests.
You won't need anything separate from the Board of Health or?
No.
Okay.
Mark?
I don't really have much. I mean, you said it was outside our purview, the lot lines, but we do require lot lines be demarcated. There seems to be an issue there, but it's, whatever. That'll, that'll, that'll shake out as it shakes out.
Right, and I didn't mean to be disrespectful or set aside. We stake them, and guess what? There's trouble with them.
It is within our purview, because we have rules that we're to abide by.
Yes, sir.
That's all. Other than that, I got nothing.
Frank?
Attorney Cook, we have received a lot of information in the last couple of weeks, perhaps, from the butter. And one of them is a series of photographs. And when you had that map up or that plan.
Would you like me to put it back?
Yeah, would you put it back up, please?
I think I got it?
All right, now, if you look up there at the building in the upper left-hand corner, that I believe is the current gift shop.
Yes, sir.
Now, it, it looks like, or according to the information that Mr. Bosano, I think his name is, has given us, is that the lot line that appears closest to that gift shop is now only four feet from the gift shop. Is that true?
I saw, I saw a, I saw one of the things that was submitted, short answer, I don't know, I haven't measured it myself. The, the rest of that is, I saw, I received a document from the town, that it had, something had been submitted, and it appeared to be a letter from council for, I don't want to say his name incorrectly, Mr. Bousat, am I saying that correct? That, I haven't received that. It's, it's a letter addressed to me. I haven't received it. It's not on attorney letterhead, and it's not signed by a council. So I don't really know what that means. But that included, included in that is a picture that says that. Now, these lines, there's information in that that the states were moved. Again, my client versus, she didn't move them, you know, and I think that's going to be part of, a part of this other matter. But I saw that, as you did, I believe it's farther than that, and I don't believe that's where the line's going to go, but I saw that picture also.
Well, we, the zoning Board of Appeals doesn't care actually where the lot line is, and we don't care who wins or loses the lawsuit. But what I care about is that if the lot line is in fact the one on the right, to the right, or I guess the north side, then that building, which is the gift shop, now it is in violation of the zoning bylaw because it doesn't meet the setback requirement.
Well, again, that's been there since 2002.
That means nothing. Because, because, another question is that the same information we got said that that shed or canopy was built without a building permit.
I saw that.
And, and it, so maybe we cannot force it to be removed because it's been there for 10 years, but it still creates a zoning violation, which in my mind means that the building is violating zoning. So I have a problem allowing this, voting for any change of use in a building that's in violation of zoning.
The building itself has been there since 1939. The, the structure that Mr. Bousat's talking about is literally a covered structure. The building itself is 10 feet back. That's, that's not.
I understand that, but that's not what's going on right now, because the building includes any accessory structure and canopies and sheds that are built onto it. So it looks to me, based on the information I got, you have a zoning violation right there.
But that's if this line is correct. Now, the 1945 lease shows.
But we, but we don't know that. And I'm, and I'm not inclined to vote for a change of use or any permit for a building that's in violation of zoning. So, I mean, I have concerns.
I understand what you're saying. And, you know, there's a couple of different alternatives that, one, even if, regards that if the distance is 10 feet without that back area, you know, it very well may be that, you know, with a continuance, we could decide if we want to adjust that, or if there's no way to move forward. Until that's addressed, then we'll have to let the litigation.
Well, I think the, the 10-year statute that protects a building, built without a building permit or a structure built without a building permit, only means the town cannot compel its removal.
Correct.
But it doesn't give it any special status under zoning. It is not a pre-existing structure or a pre-existing non-conforming structure, it's just a non-conforming structure. And as such, it's not entitled to any special benefits, because it's not a single-family residence or a two-family residence. So I, that's my concern, that, that the information we have received suggests that gift shop, the building it's in is in violation of zoning. That's my concern. All right.
I understand what you're saying, and I think that the, that, that's based on, you know, based on the line that's there. I really, to be, to be candid, I don't really have anything to say else about that.
And I don't expect you to, because this is really a lawsuit or a dispute that's in its infancy. But it's information that's been presented to us, and it's been enough at least to raise in my mind a concern about what action this board should take on a building that may be in violation of zoning.
Yeah, and in, in listening to you, if, it'd be helpful if to hear if there are any other issues or concerns. If there are not, I would, and you have enough things that are continuing, but I'd like to be able to explore that specific issue and then give more information back to you.
I'm not really worked up about converting gift shop into another unit. That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is this board acting on a building that may be in violation of zoning. That's my concern.
I understand, sir.
Jerry?
No, no further comment.
So my comments are, I'm going to echo what I agree with Frank in terms of, I don't have any issue, I think, with the standard under 240, 4.1E, everything's there in terms of site suitability, septic. I'm not concerned about the change of use. I'm not concerned, based on the property dispute, I acknowledge it exists, and there's obviously a contentious history between the neighbors. But I will share Mr. Duffy's concern about granting relief, discretionary relief, if there appears to be a ongoing violation. So, to Noreen, was there any, based on the closed permits, was there any request regarding the allegations of the covering or additions?
We did not specifically look at that. But you've also not had the abutters?
Oh, just, no, no, I'm just putting my comments. We haven't got to public comment yet, don't worry. There may be follow-up questions. Any other board questions? Turn it over to public comment then.
My name is Jonathan Stronach at 600 Palmer Ave, one of the abutters. Excuse me. Hello, board. As a relatively new homeowner and resident of Falmouth, it is a pleasure to have this opportunity to be heard by the board. I do not have nearly the level of knowledge or expertise with this board, so I'll do my best to share my concerns and facts as they are understood to me and the allotted And I like to keep in mind throughout my comments that, based on pursuit of this project, 594 Palmer Ave has redesigned their driveway, parking lot, as I mentioned, to now allow the 12 spots. Generally, my concerns are that this lot is too small for the desired expansion outlined in this request. What I believe to be past-compliant issues and current encroachments has fairly frayed the relationship between this business and abutters within a general resident zone. I believe these issues will be exacerbated by further expansion. For reference, I had a survey done by Cape and Islands Engineering around March 1st. As we saw just there, there's also been a survey done the following weeks. There were no stakes from that survey added to my property, only the ones from my Cape and Islands survey. So as the most recent survey did not add stakes to my property line, the information that I have today is based on the survey and plot plan prepared for me by Cape and Islands Engineering, which shows significant encroachments on my property that are relevant to previous compliance and compliance with new change of use requests. Parking is currently a high level of concern as the modified layout done in the last couple of weeks. as the modified layout done in the last couple of weeks lacks screening resulting in headlights shining directly into my bedroom. Since this meeting has started, I have a light on the back of my house. When it detects a motion, it turns on, it sends me a text alert. Since this meeting has started, I've received 22 text alerts. That is people checking into the bed and breakfast, that's people leaving, that's people going to their cars. There is absolutely no screening between these two properties. That type of activity that I mentioned, that continues throughout the night. That light turns on. My fiancee and I have since turned off the app because it will keep us up all night if it continues to, to ring. Light was originally installed to keep away coyotes that wander from Goodwell Park. Per Section 240, 14.1 of the zoning board bylaws, a buffer is required between business use and residence. The buffer shall protect abutting properties from glare, noise, dust, fumes, heat, and traffic. Of most important concern to me, glare, noise, dust. This is a seashell driveway. There is no screening between the two. My property is littered with rust shells that are kicked up from this parking lot. Now, before I knew about these boards, about these regulations, I did proceed to address the problem by building a fence on my property. This could be satisfied by the fence I intended to build. However, as you know, citing litigation, I don't know when that fence will be possible. And the bed and breakfast continues to operate. And as reference, the original plan that I saw from 2005 shows the cars facing towards the bike path with their headlights. This new redesign now has within what I would approximate as three feet of the property line headlights facing without any screening directly towards my house, which is approximately 40 feet in distance. Again, no privacy, shining lights throughout all hours of the night directly into our home. Furthermore, 240, 14.5, no part of any private parking area having five or more spots shall be located within a front yard as defined in Article 5, nor shall any private parking area be located within five feet of a property line. Invite this board anytime to, to view the property to see how intrusive this parking lot truly is. 240, 13.4B, regarding performance standards, site shall be designed to reduce detrimental impacts on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, intrusion of parking areas viewed from public roadways and abutting premises, and glare from headlights or area lighting. Again, I invite you to view the property to see how extensive this is. We no longer use our backyard except to take the dog out for brief intermittent things, but otherwise, we are on full display for all guests to see. Per Performance Standard 240, 13.1C, uncontaminated runoff should be directed in such ways as to recharge the groundwater within a lot where it originates unless an alternative location is approved. Furthermore, installation in materials unless otherwise specified shall conform to the standards of MA DPW standard specifications. The survey that I have has a catch basin that is shown to be, at least the physical structure, a six-foot diameter leaching basin that is encroaching over the property line. I bring this up again as in pursuit of this special permit. They have modified their parking lot, which will have an impact on the drainage system. The bylaws are relevant today as they have redesigned the driveway. I believe the system was altered in 2009 from the original 2005 plan to add additional basins. This is of particular concern as leaching would drain to my property as the physical structure of the basin itself already overlaps and extends into the property. Lastly, Falmouth zoning board bylaw, Section 240, 11.2, Article Lot Requirements, Section 3, for commercial accommodations containing six to 15 guest units, inclusive, the lot shall contain no less than the minimum area in square feet required for a single residence in the district where the building is to be located, plus an additional one-fifth of the minimum per unit above that five. As we just saw with the ser, the recent survey that they put up, that's actually a different lot square footage than what was originally on the 2005 plan. It's 22,000 roughly. The minimum requirement in general residence is 20,000 square feet. One-fifth would put us at a minimum requirement for six units at 24,000 square feet. That's why I would say that that survey is actually very relevant to the information that we're discussing today in terms of adding a new guest accommodation. And again, this is my understanding. I do not claim to be an expert. As my understanding, the recent survey work will show that the lot does not meet the requirement of 24,000 square feet, limiting the bed and breakfast to five units. I don't know when it originally was brought in 2005, it was five. I don't know if today it's five or six, but occurring to the minimum square footage requirements, I believe it would be a limit of five units. I've done my best to summarize the information in relation to my concerns, but some have been omitted due to respect for time. But I'd be more than happy to put in an email for the board's review. Lastly, purchasing my first home, moving with my fiancee to a place as beautiful and welcoming as Falmouth, was the single greatest day of my life. The last six months since then have been nothing but absolute regret and hardship for that decision. I have no issues living next to a bed and breakfast, and despite everything ongoing, wish them all the best. As long it is not done at the expense of a abutters. This is my home. At this point, the freedom and use of my land to enjoy my backyard, to feel like I can actually go there, is just the tip of the iceberg for my concerns that I bring to you. I apologize if I seem tired. I literally cannot sleep because of these issues, and they continue to persist every single day. While this fence issue will go to litigation, the bed and breakfast operating under the design of the parking lot that they did in pursuit of this special request continues to cause damage every single day. So I kindly ask the board to take these into consideration, and I would gladly provide any additional information that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Board have any questions for this abutter?
Appreciate the overview.
Jerry?
Well, you're now, you're on the north side of this property?
Uh, yes, I am between Palmer Ave, my home, and then the driveway.
The parking lot looks like it's your backyard, but it's not your backyard.
Sure does.
Okay. All right. Now, did you say there was litigation pending, or just you're having a, a boundary dispute at the present time, or is there litigation pending?
We are currently on track for trial.
What does that mean?
Uh, that means that there is a dispute over the boundary lines. I'm not sure too much more that I can say on that, and it was not able to be resolved after two recent surveys, which is unfortunate, but still remains unresolved and will be resolved by Massachusetts Land Court.
Well, is there a case pending in a court?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we now have a boundary line dispute on the north side and one on the south side, and the results of these decisions may determine the size of the lot.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, anything?
No.
The absolute want to follow up on any of the issues raised? Excuse me, any other public comment? Sir, please come up.
My name is Gerald Voiznol. I'm, I'm on the south side of, you have to excuse me. I got a bunch of pictures I want to show you. If you keep your pamphlets together, you'll see what's going on.
You can have mine, and I'll share with Scott.
Here you go. You can, through you, Mr. Chia, he can have my...
That's fine.
I'm not a voting member, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Keep on, I'll share.
This has already been...
This is, uh, these were previously filed.
These have been submitted.
Yeah.
You probably know her uncle Fred Hogg. He, uh, he was a friend of mine. We had two title examinations done in 89. I just had one done in March. Proves that she does not own the extra 25 feet. I've got three attorneys saying the same thing. I've got paperwork in my briefcase. I haven't had nothing but trouble with this lady, okay? When they, when they put up the stakes for her lot, her uncle showed me where all the bounds were on that piece of property. I've got a big map in my briefcase that there was a concrete bound right behind the garage. When they built, that concrete bound disappeared. She claimed she was a stake 25 feet more on my property, never saw a stake. I never found out that she claimed she owned the 25 feet until she put the stone steps to the Also, this was, this, people have not been truthful from day one on this. It says currently there was, there's an existing two-family house. There was never a two-family house on there. Never. It was a small rent her uncle had, okay? She says she's got a place for 12 spaces. I went to the zoning board, planning board. She says she got 12. They have no record of that. This survey from Cape and Island. Stakes have been moved. She claims I moved, why would I move? There weren't no stakes.
Do you have a copy, counsel? Do you have a copy of this, counsel?
She had the lowest lot on Palmer Ave, and I probably have the second one. I've got a, the state has a catch basin at the end of my driveway. I've got two big ones in the back. I still get groundwater on the heavy, heavy rains. I'm not sure if she does also. It was two cer, her, she had her cer, her lot surveyed from, uh, from River Hawk out of Middleborough, and I had mine just done, that done at Cape and Island. The stakes are almost in the same spot, except the two that had been moved. And she said I moved them. Why would I move them? They were moved towards my property. I will walk you through. First, all her permits she pulled, she pulled 31 permits. One permit is under Fred Hogg, her uncle. He was, he had died for a year. He was already dead. He pulled, she pulled it under his name. There was a kitchen fire, 110, 20, 2002. She claimed there ever was. It's right, it's right here. I'm nervous, so be, be patient. Do you see the fire in the backyard, the fire pit? Went to the fire department. The fire pits are supposed to be 25 feet from the house. That, to the left of that fire pit is five feet away. That's my property line. You can see the handrail, how close they are to the fire pit. Trees, my big oak trees. One of her trees came over my yard, took all the TV cable and the telephone wire down. She hired a landscaper to cut them down. He cut them, took them away, left the stump there. When the big windstorm came that took most of the trees down on Worcester Court, one of my big trees came down, took all the wires down, took the service right off my house. Billy Fender reinstalled it. Now we go to the steps. Six steps around town property or the railroad property. If somebody gets hurt up there, who's the reliable? Is it insurance? The next page, no permit for open shed roof. That four-by-four is four feet from my property line. Now here are the stakes that had been moved. One stake she moved, somebody moved them because she doesn't want to lose that tree. That stake was moved, her pink sticks are hers, it was moved 22 inches towards my property. The stake, uh, yeah, four feet. And the other stake near the bike path was moved 14 inches towards my property. You can tell by the stake, the pink doesn't even touch the ground with it, didn't hammer it in fire enough. She's just crafty. I'm tired of people throwing the rubbish on my property. Beer cans, rubbish, I've got it on my phone. I've got dates, her garbage cans are always by the road almost every day of the week. The garage, most of the work has been done in the garage. No header inspection, no insulation inspection, all new walls are up. And that's it. Thank you. I would like to talk, I would wish the zoning board could come out and walk the property with me, but you probably don't do that.
We do that.
You do do it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just not with you.
What's that?
Just not with you.
We don't do it with applicants or the abutters.
We go alone.
I wish you'd come out in a group. You're welcome to park in my backyard.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Counsel, would you like to respond? Just ever so briefly, if I may, um, the, uh, the lot size is something that I'll have to look at. I don't believe it's a viable issue, but I don't want to discount it without looking at it. And since I had the issue I wanted to look at with the distance to the property line, I'll look at that also. There was no work done in the parking lot. The only work that was done is, and again, I actually don't want to talk about it because there's settlement discussions that the abutter terminated, and there is an active, active case in land court. But there's no work done to increase the parking lot size or to change the parking lot at all. All that was done is that it was staked out, that the spaces were staked out. I, it's also going to be active litigation here shortly. I have affidavits of people saying that the abutter, they saw him move the stakes. It's odd. I don't get it, but I don't think it's anything really to take time up on here. I think that, I'm appreciative of a lot of the input that we've gotten. There's a couple of things I feel like we can come back and give information on that you have asked for, and, you know, we're eager to do that and to hopefully keep this matter, get you the information you need so that you can favorably vote on it. And based on the input from the comment that we received, you know, we would ask for a continuation so that we can provide that information and allow you to have all of it so you can make an informed decision.
Any other public comment? Certainly, sir.
When I had talked, when her surveyor was there, we walked with him, and she, she agreed that the property line was where, where the surveyor said it was. She agreed to move her stuff off my property. She went in the house, called her attorney. I get a real aggressive phone call the next day. I've got the letter with me. That, no trespassing, it's my land. No cutting trees, I haven't touched anything. Water mitigation, when she got the property, she got every tree on that lot except three trees in the back. You talk about water mitigation. I just want to cut a few trees because they're overhanging my house. I want to put up a fence, keep her guests off my property. I don't think it's asking too much. Thank you.
I would just add that I would disagree with the fact that the parking lot has not been changed. I think that's specifically how they originally had eight spots and now are claiming 12. I, again, live at that home every single day. I watched the construction take place, and the result of that, as I was driving to this meeting, is a car in a designated lot, which has been, I believe, green, whole setup to show designated lots, pulling in and turning and putting its headlights directly towards the house. Originally, I believe it was set so that parking would face light path. I believe, in my opinion, that there has been significant change to the parking lot.
So, the board, we have a request for a continuance. Firstly speaking, I would, I would suggest we might want to give the applicant some specific things to come back and be... and be prepared to answer. Off the top of my head, one of the abutters raising the issue about the performance standards, their two forty thirteen, fourteen, fourteen-three, I think, needs to be addressed regards to parking. Mitigation of any lights and so on. This is an application. It's going to be an increased use of the property. So I think the... Clearly, the... Those performance standards need to be addressed by the applicant as well as any mitigation plan. You've heard some of the complaints from the abutters. To what I will just say for the purpose of the audience is that we're not the land court or the superior court. We recognize that there is an active boundary dispute and it could be in litigation. While it's important for the board to hear that information, it's not going to be definitive as to our decision-making process under the zoning act unless, as to the performance standards, the lot size, it would become relevant. So that would be the extent of our consideration about the boundary dispute as it directly applies to the zoning bylaw. Other specific issues, Frank?
I'm wondering if a continuance will be beneficial at all.
Okay.
It looks to me like there's a lot of unresolved issues here. I think it's very important that we know where the boundary line is because that will determine whether or not the shed or the gift shop has a zoning violation as a structure. The gentleman who lives at number six hundred pointed out, the boundary line disputes, if one resolved by the court, will determine the size of the lot and that may affect the number of units that are allowed on this lot. These questions will not be answered. And also, we've heard a number of complaints from the neighbors on both sides. If there are zoning violations or violations of any existing special permit, they should file a complaint with the building commissioner and let him make a determination. Then perhaps at some point in the future, everybody can come back here when everything is known and we can deal with known facts. I don't think we're ready. I'm not ready to vote on this. And I don't think if we have a continuance for a month, I'll be ready then.
Park?
Would it not be in order viewing this? Because if we do vote to stop, the applicant won't be able to come back for two years with these boundary disputes and the calculations that are necessary in her trying to pursue her business. Would it not be best if she were to withdraw and then come back when these things are taken care of, whenever that may be?
That's up to the applicant, but a vote could occur.
I offer that as a suggestion because I don't see the vote going in the direction that they perhaps would like. I think that might be the wise thing for you to do.
She's been in business here a long time. Plan's on being in business here a long time. We have absolute power. And we can take the information that is going around and bear the concerns here and address them all, you know. And certainly, I suspect the two litigation will be long-term issues. And then they'll play out as it does and...
Well, six months is going to be better than two years.
Is that a formal request to withdraw at this time?
Please receive that as a formal request.
We have a formal request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I make that motion to allow that.
Definitely second by Mr. Fennerin. Certainly, sir. Quickly, please.
Now that she knows that she doesn't own the twenty-five feet, he called... Her attorney called me up.
Sir? The boundary dispute is not before us.
No, that's not it. It's, uh... He said it was going to be... They're going to take the land by adverse possession and it's going to end up in land court. Always getting threatened with lawsuits. If we could have settled this, the two of us together, or John and the rest of us, we could have spent the money doing nice landscaping instead of paying attorneys and court costs. That's all I got to say.
We have a motion to allow to, uh... Draw. Second.
Second.
I'll give that to Mr. Fennerin. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That is a vote. Thank you, counsel. Thank you to the parties. concludes our continuations on the agenda. Getting into new hearings. First up, we have hearing fifteen dash two-three, Barnstable County Agricultural Society Incorporated, twelve twenty Nathan S Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking, parking for a fee.
Shall I read? We have the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Inc. at twelve twenty Nathan S Ellis Highway, East Falmouth. Apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash six point one, comma, two forty dash fourteen point one, two forty dash five point one F and two forty dash five one B of the Code of Falmouth to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking and parking for a fee on subject property known as twelve twenty Nathan Ellis Highway. And I don't have a lot of comments from any other... I'll flip through. No. I have no comments. No comment from Health. No comment from Assessors. Engineering, no comment. Fire, no comment. And town, no comment.
Any correspondence from the abutters? Complaints or otherwise?
Nothing.
Where the applicant? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Wendy Brown. I'm the general manager. And as I said, I'm here to apply for our annual special permit to do non-agricultural events, which to date, there's about sixteen days of the year we do that, and for paid parking during the Barnstable County Fair. And most of the people that you've talked to, we meet every year with all of those organizations. So I've met with the police, the fire, and they are also meeting with our special events to make sure that there's no parking issues on one fifty-one. Which you can't avoid parking issues on one fifty-one now, but...
Does the board have any questions? We'll start with you, Jerry.
No question.
Is there any significant changes since the previous special permit was issued?
No, we have just... Actually, it's all the same events except for one, which is a camping group, which is just a private group that's going to be on the grounds. There'll be no traffic issues or anything.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, nothing except I've been beating my brains trying to figure out where I've seen you before.
You look familiar, too, so...
Yeah. I went up asking about the quilting groups. They have the quilt that I need. I have stitched together. My mother was making.
Now I remember.
However, yeah. But no, I have no problems with that, so.
Suzanne? Mark?
We'll see you next year.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
We're not done yet. I have no questions. Uh, public comment? Hang on. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. I'll make a second to that. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to approve? And I'll make up for a friendly amendment that we incorporate rather than reading it all off last year's decision. Let's do this year.
Sounds like a plan.
In the interest of time and efficiency. All right.
And the hockey game.
And the hockey game.
Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve the special permit? Since there have been no changes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? No, that's a vote. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
See you next year. Uh, next up, we have nineteen dash two-three... Guti, and I'm sorry if I got the name wrong. Eighty-one Redbrook Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a detached garage with an accessory apartment above and the front yard more than fifty feet from the front property line.
We have me. Gary Judy? Is that how I say it? That's how we're going. Eighty-one Redbrook Road, East Falmouth, now apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit...
I'm Gary Guti from eighty-one Red...
Guti, my apologies, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You just have to read something into the record first.
Okay. Uh, for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash six point six B and two forty eleven point four A. One in parentheses, I in parentheses. Of the Code of Falmouth to construct a detached garage with an accessory apartment above in the front yard more than fifty feet from the front property line on subject property known as eighty-one Redbrook Road, East Falmouth. And we have... We have a decision from the planning board. It's a long one, so we'll incorporate that. Here we have... Board of Health. Been revised. There's a four-bedroom septic system here now, so one bedroom will need to be removed, right? Assessors has no comment other than they need to visit the site when you're done. Engineering. Number one. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Redbrook Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering department. Two. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights ways. Four. A drywall is shown for the proposed roof area as we typically recommend. Based on the current address policy, the main house will remain eighty-one Redbrook Road and the accessory apartment, if approved, will be assigned eighty-one Redbrook Road Apartment A. Number six. We recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address. Seven. The proposed work is down gradient and setback from town right-of-way but close to the abutting property. We defer to the planning board if erosion and sediment controls and limit of work should be added to the plans. Regardless, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included or similar in any approval. Construction activity shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties of the town right-of-way. Engineering. Fire Department, no comment. Concom, no comment. No comment there.
Any in support or opposition?
See, no letters, right? In good shape.
Go ahead, sir.
Have a little background. It's a about one and three-quarter acre lot, so we're a little bit shy of the two acres required without a special permit. The, um... The houses, uh... The proposed house is about seventy... Almost seventy-two feet off the street, twelve and a half feet from the side to the back of the house, the lot line, so we're well within the boundaries. The, um... It's in the front yard mainly because the back hundred and... Well, two hundred feet is protected area, so it had to go in the front. There's no other place to put it. Uh, it's well... It's pretty far away from everybody. I have spoken to my neighbors on the left side and the right side, and they don't seem to have any issue with it. So this... That's the general location right there. This is the main house. That's the river back there. The nearest neighbor is... One is there and one is way over here. And there's also an auxiliary apartment or at least a garage here. Well, probably about here that my neighbor has. So that's the basic layout of where it's going. If you can figure out how to get back there, I'll show you the proposed plan. So it's basically a two-car garage with an auxiliary apartment above it. The left-hand side, it's an internal entrance with a set of stairs that go up to the apartment. It is set up with cedar shakes at the top, clapboards on the back to match the existing house. This is a covered porch where people can get in without rain and snow. A small deck on the back side. We'll have a set of stairs coming down for a second means of egress. I spoke with Gary in the building department, and he requested that change. If it matters, um... This is the layout. So it'll be... It's about six hundred and ten square feet. It's got a living room, single bedroom, walk-in closet, a bathroom and a kitchen. It's pretty simple. The base, the first floor is going to be a garage where I'll work on my antique cars and stuff like that. It's going to be kind of a hobby shop. And that's basically what the project is. I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
Board questions?
Uh, just more confirmatory. So the garage and the accessory dwelling is a total of twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct? Six hundred for the garage, six hundred roughly?
Yes, but they don't count the... Apparently, they don't... Yeah.
Just kind of rough order of magnitude.
Yeah.
Uh, just, again, confirmation that the septic system is going to remain for the four bedrooms. What are you doing?
I'm going to speak with the Board of Health. I think what I've decided to do is add a separate septic system. On the plan that they approved, that was an option. It was either run it into the existing one and lose a bedroom or put in a separate system. But as it turns out, the cost to put a separate system in is peanuts compared to the difference of running it down to the other one because it's about a hundred and twenty feet from the leach field. And because of that distance, they'll require a second tank anyway. So the most cost-effective and the best solution, I think, at this point, would be to put a septic system on the left side of the house, well within the boundaries of the wells and everything that's around there. Um, of course, it would get Board of Health approval and all that. So I think that's the way we're going to go. But that's not etched in stone at this point.
Something we'll need to know. And you did mention there are the two means of egress, correct?
Um, excuse me?
Two means of egress, you said?
Yes, there is. The stairs downstairs and stairs off the back deck.
Thank you very much.
No questions. Looks like a good project.
Mark?
Are you going to rent the, uh... Thing out?
I don't hear very well.
Are you going to rent the apartment out?
Yes. As it turns out, a good friend of mine lost his housing in his last sell-off. And he's been looking. He has a summer rental. He has a camper there at the moment. He's going to move in for a month till this is built. He, he has a camper there at the moment, he's gonna move in for a month till this is built. And, uh, it's gonna be rented to him, and then, he, he's a friend of mine, so we're gonna use the garage together and those type of things, so.
Excellent, any more units we can get in this town is a good thing.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Jerry?
No questions.
I have no questions. Public comment? Ain't none. How would the Board like to proceed? Motion to close?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion to approve? Motion approved?
Again.
Second.
Great, thank you. Oh, we gotta, we're not quite done. I'm sorry.
Findings, let's see, it's in RE District, it's in Moquit Bay. It's, uh, flood zone AE eleven. The house itself is eighteen hundred, the new addition will, eighteen hundred square feet, the addition will be six thirty-one. The lot size is seventy-four seven, seventy-four thousand, seven hundred fifty. Uh, it's on a public road. Uh, lot coverage is three point two, uh, now, pre, now, uh, structure and all is nine point three nine. It'll go up to four point four, four, and twelve point two nine. He's gonna keep the fifth, the, uh, fifth bedroom, so we don't have to worry about the.
Testimony was that the applicant intends to put in a separate septic system.
Right.
Testimony that it is, the building is being located on the front side due to topography, uh, development in wetlands.
The height of the building is twenty-one eight-six, twenty-one six. I think that's all I have for findings.
Forty-six point six B and.
Two forty-eleven, point four A, I, uh, one I.
To make it easy for the zoning administrator or secretary, cut and paste the planning board's decision, all of those findings are already there. Any other findings on this site? Conditions?
We want to allow the administrator to make an administrative approval, subject to the Board of Health approval. We don't have that, yeah.
Yeah, for the septic, as well as the addition of the second set of stairs on the backside, the second point of egress.
Erosion control in the back.
Right.
Incorporate planning and, uh.
Yeah, planning, yeah, planning and engineering.
Engineering's comments, the address as well. Hours of work. And it needs to be off the roadway, the lot is plenty big to accommodate that. Anything else? Mark, no, not too many. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, sir, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thanks again.
Next up, we have application twenty-one dash two-three. Vicin, or Vicin Inc., Incorporated, Seventy-five Locust Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to change the existing use from a bed and breakfast to a duplex.
All right, we have Vicin Inc., Seventy-five Locust Street, Falmouth, apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for modification of a special, for special permit numbers two-nine-one-three and one-four-six dash ninety-three. This locust section is two forty dash ten-two A, two forty-three C, of the code of Falmouth to change the existing use from a bed and breakfast to a duplex. Property is located at Seventy-five Locust. See what we have. No comment from planning. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Locust Street is a state right of way in this area. Any alterations within the right of way would require permission from mascot. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abuddies, or rights away. Number two, nice, no site work is proposed. Number three, based on the current address policy for duplex structure, the following addresses will be assigned if the project is approved. Seventy-five, Seventy-five Locust Street Apartment A, Seventy-five Locust Street Apartment B. The engineering division will assign these addresses upon submission, submission of the building permit. Number four, we recommend the following conditions be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the addresses. Engineering. No comment, fire? No comment, Hong Kong? The septic systems on the property are pre-nineteen ninety-five? Doesn't change how the septic capacity, unless all we have.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, Kevin Clower, attorney here in town, and I'm here tonight representing Vic and LL, uh, Inc., the owners of Seventy-five Locust Street. I'm joined by Trevor Chidester, uh, his partner, Carolyn Monk, was here but had to leave in order to catch a train, unfortunately. Uh, they are seeking permission to modify the existing special permits on this property. Special permit number two-nine-one-three, which was issued in nineteen seventy-eight, and one-four-six dash ninety-three, which was issued in nineteen ninety-three. Seventy-five Locust Street was, uh, built in eighteen eighty-one. It's located just outside of the downtown district on the way to Woods Hole. Uh, it is the Captain Lawrence Inn, or the Lawrence House, and I always get kinda confused there. But it is abutted by two sides, uh, on two sides by midcape lumber, uh, and to the northeast by seven-eleven. This lot is just about half an acre, it's twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It is split-zoned, with the front portion of the lot being zoned general residence near its Locust Street, and the rear of the lot being lo- uh, zoned light industrial A. Presently, there is a seven-bedroom bed and breakfast, as well as a one-bedroom apartment above the garage. The total footprint by structure here is, uh, three thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet, which is seventeen point eight, uh, forty percent allowed. Other than a side yard setback to the southwest of seven point two feet to the stairs, the entirety of the dwelling and the lot is conforming to lot coverage and setback requirements. History of the property is fascinating, um, it, I don't know, the entire history going back to eighteen eighty-one, but, uh, starting in nineteen seventy-eight, this was actually a carpet shop with residential space. The nineteen seventy-eight special permit allowed for the five upstairs bedrooms in the main house to be used as a bed and breakfast, with the downstairs reserved for the carpet shop and the family residence. The nineteen ninety-three special permit, which was issued under two forty-three, which was an alteration of a non-conforming use in structure, two forty fifty-seven D, which allowed for multifamily use in the LIA District, and two forty-one oh-nine B, uh, which allowed for alternate parking surface, that permit acknowledged that the entirety of the main building was a seven-room bed and breakfast, and it allowed for construction of the garage and the apartment for use by the innkeeper. Uh, it also allowed for alternate parking surface areas, uh, which was reinforced turf where the driveway area is. The applicants purchased this property in twenty fifteen and have operated as a bed and breakfast. They did so until the onset of COVID, uh, and at that point, and since then, for a variety of reasons, which are likely evident, the bed and breakfast model has proven not to be viable for them. So they're seeking to modify the existing permits, but that allows for that use. This proposal will not alter the existing buildings, footprints, or layouts, or remain as currently situated. Rather, it effectively eliminates the bed and breakfast use, uh, and will acknowledge it as a duplex, the seven-bedroom main dwelling and a one-bedroom dwelling above the garage. Two forty ten point two A states that pre-existing non-conforming uses can be changed by special permit, provided that, uh, what's being proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Board is asked to consider the standards of two forty twelve point one E, and whether or not this change creates any new dimensional nonconformities. This proposal will not impact lot coverage, will not impact setbacks. It will reduce the required parking, which is currently nine spaces, down to only four required parking spaces, uh, only four required parking spaces. The modification of the special permits can be approved under two forty ten point two A, while remaining compliant with two forty-six point three, which is previously two forty fifty-seven D, which allows for the multifamily use in the LIA District, and also compliant with two forty fourteen point one I-two, which is previously two forty-one oh-nine B, which allows for the non-pavement parking. Uh, duplexes are allowed by right within a general residence district, and multifamily is allowed by special permit, uh, in the LIA District pursuant to two forty-six point three. As noted, the garage apartment was permitted pursuant to that two forty fifty-seven D, which allows for that multifamily use in the LIA, uh, provided the public good is being served, this, the industrial zone's not adversely affected, and, um, that the use is permitted in that zone and not noxious to multifamily. The Board found that in nineteen ninety-three, I don't think that case has changed since then. In effect, the only change that this request really makes is the removal of the allowance of the bed and breakfast, and a removal of the condition prohibiting, uh, rental of the apartment, because that was intended for the innkeeper use. So again, no new nonconformities, no change in existing nonconformities. The only practical change is the removal of the bed and breakfast use. It'll acknowledge duplexes as they exist, uh, and allow them to be used the same as any other residents in town. Proposed alteration is in no way substantially more detrimental than what currently, uh, than currently allowed, uh, as a bed and breakfast. Represents a decrease in intensity of use, a reduction in required parking, and the use that is allowed within that district. There's no adverse effects here, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits. As such, it meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A, two forty twelve point one E, while remaining compliant two forty-six three and two forty fourteen point one I-two. For these reasons, I would ask that this Board grant the special permit request, or just request to modify the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Questions from the Board, start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
Right?
So there'll be three total units.
Two.
Two, the, um.
One seven-bedroom main house, and then the one-apartment garage, uh, the one, one-bedroom apartment above the garage. And actually, under the, under the multifamily use that's allowed by special permit, they could seek up to three units here, they're only asking for two.
And what's the intended use?
Uh, the, uh, the applicants will likely use one of them, uh, for their own use, and they might still rent one on a periodic, whether it be monthly or seasonal basis, but they don't wanna be in the bed and breakfast business.
So they intend living in the back and, um, short-term rental in the seven bedrooms like Airbnb or?
It could be, uh, it's gonna be rented as one si- one unit, though, not as a bed and breakfast, with sing- singular rooms being rented. It could be a week, a month, a season. Same as any other house could be rented.
About all we have?
He was digging for it, he was digging. I'm all set.
It's late.
I'm all set, thank you.
No questions. I have no questions. Public comment? How would the Board like to proceed? Maybe you have some discussion?
Think it's a good project.
Motion to close?
He did leave out his number one sentence. I'll make a motion to close?
Motion is made to close, is there a second?
Okay.
Made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. How would the Board like to proceed? Motion to approve? Getting seconded. Findings?
Findings, let's see what we have here. It's a split zone. The southeast corner is in GR, the rear is in light industrial. No overlay, no flood, um.
Historical. Historic.
Historical?
Overlay.
Overlay, thank you. Partially in historical overlay. Um, it's twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight. Where the, God, it's getting late. It's, uh, seventeen point eight, uh, covered, and twenty-nine point four with all structures. It's on a public road. Two forty dash ten-two A. Anything else I left off?
It's not more detrimental, well, actually, it's not, uh, noxious to the industrial, permanent industrial uses in the area. Testimony will decrease, uh, use in neighborhood.
Yes.
Any other findings? Conditions?
Conditions, engineering. Changing the addresses. Historic did write, I forgot to read it. Historic wrote, no added lighting, hardscapes, fence, and fences for historic.
Incorporate this, it's fine, so we'll incorporate the, uh, any of the conditions and comments.
Could not just be without approval by historic?
Yes.
There's no, nothing being done, right?
Any use?
How about, uh, require it be registered for a short-term rental so the town can get that luscious taxes?
That's fine. Anything else, any other conditions, Jerry?
Every penny counts.
I don't know what that means, but no one else objected, so. The applicant does.
Applicable tax to short-term rentals.
It's like a hotel tax, but it's only on a private residence and, uh, sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Last hearing, uh, earlier hearing this evening, we have, uh, two-four dash two-three Bateman Trustees, fourteen Clam Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a pool and rinse station exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
Susan Bateman Trustee, eight ninety-one, Moquit, Highway, East Falmouth, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty eleven-three A, form parentheses of the code of Falmouth, to construct a pool and a rinse station exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structure on said property as known as fourteen Clam Lane in East Falmouth. And let's see what we have here. Planning has no comment. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Clam Lane is a, is a new private roadway cur- currently under construction. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. And number three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abuddies, or public rights away. Engineering, Hong Kong, no comment? What we have?
Would the applicant?
Good evening. All right, good evening, my name is Shannon Sylvester, I'm here representing Susan Bateman. Uh, we are here to request a lot increase, lot coverage increase from twenty percent to twenty-two point six five. Showing here, um, all we are adding is a pool with a stamped crease surround, along with the pool equipment in the right corner. And then here is the landscape plan, so you can kinda see what we intend to do, um, with the pool off the back deck. There will be a rinse station on top of the deck, um, so it won't be on the actual property. It's gonna be placed on top against the house. As you can see, there will be some plants. We were also looking to, this is the pool dimensions as requested, to show. It is just a plunge pool, so it's fairly small, not deep, um, more so just something to cool off in. This here is what the, the shower will essentially look like. It will be a PVC, white PVC shower. And ideally, we will be putting in a white PVC fence to help with noise as long, as, along with the pool regulations, uh, for the in-town pool. According to section two forty eleven point three, um, four, Residence B is allowed to have a maximum of twenty-five percent lot coverage for s- for a structure, may be allowed by special permit. For the Board of Appeals, in issuing the special permit, the Board shall take into consideration the following. The size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structure in the neighborhood, the affected shadow and adjacent properties, the impact of view on, and vistas from public ways. Obviously, a pool is leveled to the ground, no shadowing or adjacent properties, and there will be no public view with the fence. Any questions?
More questions?
Joe, I, I had to drive by two or three times to get to the right property, because there's no numbering on everything, but. Looks like you're gonna have the proper fencing and everything you need to do, um, I don't see any issues.
Oh, I did forget to mention, the gates will also have the outswing away from the pool with the self-closing hinges.
Thank you.
Mark?
Uh, no, nothing other than this guy's building this for his mother.
This is his mother's house, there is four other properties that we are also under construction right now.
Well, he's a fine lad.
I too had trouble finding a property, but, uh, it is actually listed on the side of a hockey stick that's stuck in the ground.
I drove around, too.
I don't know further questions.
Jerry?
No question.
Public comment?
Good evening. My name's Henry Peters, I'm the director of butter. I, uh, I have a lot here that's, uh. Give it to the clerk.
Suzanne's the gatekeeper. I'm the man.
And I have a proposed, uh, Cape house for this area. Here's my septic system, here's him. Where a pool area would be. Right there. So I'm concerned with lighting.
Would you mind just going back to the podium, please, thank you, sir.
Audience can hear you at home.
Do you wanna take this back?
First of all, why, why do we have a, a lot coverage? Why do we have a, uh, a ruling on this, X amount of square feet? Tucked out water, I guess, for recharge. So th- this is there for a reason. And, uh, this is really, uh, a little excessive with the lot coverage, with this pool. I think that lightings could be an issue with sound. I plan on building a house. I have my, my site plan there. Uh, I'm gonna build a Cape-type house. So, I mean, he, he's down here, I'm up here. You know? Uh, six-foot fence isn't gonna make it. I'm wondering if he is concerned about this. I don't wanna be uncomfortable in my house, I don't want him to be uncomfortable. I'm wondering about planting, if they're gonna put any type of screen in, our varieties that will grow quickly, something to give it some screening, cut down on noise. I think this is gonna be a white vinyl fence, if I'm correct. So I'll be looking at a hundred and thirty feet of white wall. I'm worried about runoff, if he's gonna, uh, he's gonna be using more square footage where this area would runoff. That would be a concern to me. And, uh, I wonder if this pool seems to be after the fact, after you already know you have your lot coverage maxed out. And you're building a brand-new house, it's not like an existing house. It's not like you're putting up an apartment for your mother-in-law. This is, uh, a little excessive on this lot coverage. Wondering about pumping? If she needs to pump this out, if it overflows with rain? There are scuppers, I'm sure. Where does this water go? It overflows, it needs to be pumped out? You know, it just seems like a lot for this area, you know? For this, for this small lot. And is he setting a precedence here? You know? It's four of the lots, they're gonna wanna pool, too, you know? Are they gonna wanna exceed lot coverage? This pool is, uh, thirty feet, six inches long. That's a fairly good-sized structure. You know? Twelve feet wide. So it's a bit, you know? It's a, it's a bit of a structure, it's a lot of water. And, uh, like I say, I'm the closest to the butter, I would be the closest affected by this. Sure I have other questions, but I'm running low on fuel, I'm getting real tired here. Uh, there's a pool, uh, equipment house here. It doesn't give any dimensions. I don't really remember if it has a setback on it. But, uh, I'm wondering about that. I have a nice holly tree, it's about a sixty-year-old holly tree, it's about thirty feet tall. It will need a little bit of trimming when they put the fence up. She's gonna put a six-foot fence around her perimeter. And I'm concerned about the tree. A couple of branches that are hanging over on, uh, under her property. I would like to be present if there is any pruning done on this tree. And I guess that's about it, you know?
Any questions for the butter?
No.
No, it's my question. I might have something for the engineer.
No, but I appreciate, uh, Mr. Peters bringing this to our attention, because there's a couple of things that we may, um, if this gets approved, the conditions that we might wanna put on the, on the decision.
As lighting.
Well, we have, for example, on lighting, uh, we can have a provision that the lighting poles be no higher than the fence and that there be reflective, uh, covers so that all the lighting goes down and not up. And, um, then he's mentioned runoff, but I think one of our standard conditions is it all all runoff, you can not be allowed to runoff.
Run off the premises.
Off the premises. They must be contained on the premises. That'll be one of the standard conditions, I think.
There could be more.
I would like to see some plantings that would Yeah, but how tall? Are you gonna put some type of barber vitality that grows tall that's gonna create some screening, or what do we got? You know?
I was gonna ask that, actually.
And, uh, and grading, you know, the grading, there's gonna be a surround around this pool. It's gonna be bordered by a hardscape. I don't know if that's part of the structure. Considered part of the structure, this hardscape.
Mr. Peters, let me, let me ask you this. Is there a spot on this, on the lot that would be more acceptable to you, or?
I don't know if he could position it in a different way. If he could, it would be helpful. He could position it over towards the back corner of his lot more. And I wonder about this, uh, this sunroom and deck that are on this existing, this structure he's building. If those were approved in the first plan, or is that an afterthought? And then we'll squeeze the pool in.
They were initial plans.
How would you verify that?
Um, with the building permit? And the, uh, uh, the building plans, the building department has the initial building plans.
So the deck was included, the sunroom and the deck?
Yep.
So, so you knew right from the start that this was gonna be?
So what happened was the homeowner-
This was gonna be exceeding. You knew right from the start, this was gonna be exceeding the, the lot coverage?
The homeowner, after, after, after we can start, we started conducting the build, she decided that she wanted to put a pool and the rinse station on the deck. We did try to find the best suitable location, and this was the only location that we could find on the site, so that way we have the dry wells for the shower where it will runoff into, uh, and then obviously with the pool and the pool house and easy access from inside the home out to the pool deck, et cetera.
And the pool has the required ten feet?
Yep. All the setbacks are met.
Including the lock?
I wish I had made the, the site plans bigger.
It says, uh, you have a site plan there, I imagine. And it's, uh, they've got ten foot three to the pool. I don't know if this hardscape is included in the structure. Any, uh, pavers or whatever they use, they may use to hardscape this?
I believe it depends on the permeability, is that?
Well, if it's hardscape, it's not gonna accept water, I don't believe. You know?
Is there another location where the pool equipment, it's right up on the property line there? That, for me, is a little concerning.
I mean, we can move it closer to the pool or closer to their personal property on the opposite side.
Is this gonna be a structure?
What?
A pool?
No, it's literally, it's on, it's on a, it's on a slab. It's not-
No, my, my concern is just noise.
Noise as well, yes.
Uh, there was discussion or additional questions from the board at this point?
Relative to that, and the noise. At, first off, there's two kinds of trees there, the, the green ones and the red ones. Is that the, uh, what I'm?
Yeah, so the green ones are evergreen, the reds, I wish I could pull it up, but-
Some kind of deciduous?
I do have an actual worksheet with a booklet of all of the different plants that I can send to you.
That, that's a, a deciduous tree or, or a leaf tree or whatever, the red?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
I'm assuming, cause it's-
Are there hide-on trees or?
Arbor vitias are gonna grow.
Sounds like, I think the board, the board may have an appetite that a landscape plan be submitted.
And like I say, this doesn't have dimensions on it. This is a thirty-foot structure.
It is a twelve-by-twenty-four pool.
Then you have six and a half.
It's thirty, it's thirty.
Right.
Yeah.
It's thirty feet, thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
So that's part of the structure.
If they, yeah, they consider that.
So it's a pretty substantial structure. It's not a kiddie pool.
But they're within their funny, they can have twenty-five percent lot coverage with
And here's me, up here. And upstairs of a cape house in the dorm room, here's me. Here's the pool.
There's specific additional questions from the board at this time?
Uh, you know, and again, we're, you, you can see that we're all trying to seek some solution to this. I mean, you mentioned a hundred and fifty-foot long white wall. What if it's a gray wall? Are you opposed to, to changing the color of the fencing if the applicant would be amenable to it? We're trying to
A white plastic, a white plastic wall. So you turn it into a gray plastic wall?
True.
I, I like the landscape idea. I would like to-
Landscape plan would be helpful. One, one just suggestion. There was a, uh, plan that was eventually approved by this board for a forty-B. It went through mediation. And part of the decision by agreement now in mediation was that the developer would provide the butter with a, an allowance for, um, plantings on the butter's side of the fence. Cause the, you know, a hundred and fifty feet of just bare fence, I, I understand Mr. Peters' concern. That's gonna be very annoying.
Where's your, uh, holly tree in relation?
Right on the corner.
You just pointed out?
It is, I can't point it out.
Oh, it's, it's up back there, okay. It's not relative to the pool.
It's up.
So your property fronts on Crowe?
Yes, it does.
So you're, you're back to that?
And the family property is out.
I'd like to address that, since-
This is my suspicion.
Okay, so I live on, my name is Regina Bruce Johnson. I live on nine Crowe Road in East Falmouth. And my property is this one here, right next to the garage, okay? On Monday, the property was re-surveyed for this meeting. Um, and at that point, after being surveyed, within twenty minutes of the surveyor leaving, I once again had construction vehicles and their cars driving through the property line into my backyard and down my driveway to Crowe Road to get out. This has been a continually ongoing situation since this project has gotten as big as it has. I am opposed to the size of this pool. My second, um, reasoning is when you get to this side of the garage where the fence will be, if the stakes were in place, they would not be able to bring a, equipment in to dig this property, to dig the hole. It is not wide enough if there were stakes involved. They would have to come onto my property again with bulldozers or backhoes or whatever they use to dig pools and concrete trucks to pour this pool. I think that it's an excessive ask. I understand wanting a pool. Everybody wants a pool. But I don't like the infringement, the infringement or encroachment on the property lines. So this week I went out and bought no trespassing signs and, um, caution tape and made my own with sawhorses to, um, keep them from driving across the property line into my backyard to exit the property. So when I set that up on Tuesday after the property had been, um, driven on in the back of her new home, they had moved the stakes at the end to actually get behind the property again. And if you were to go there right now, there's a construction trailer still in that backyard that has to go around that garage to get back out on the clam lane because I've put up this silly little barrier. I have tried to be a very kind neighbor. I have tried to, um, work with um, the construction people as much as I can. And at one point, I had allowed them to go back to backfill the foundation. And, um, they had cut over a little on the property and I had allowed that because it was just now a hole in the ground with a foundation. Um, I think that it has become an excessive point of access for them to continue to abuse. I think that that needs to be addressed before we put in a pool. This property line and how they're gonna actually build this without going on to nine Crowe Road back property.
According to the plans here, they have, uh, ten feet, two inches.
Okay.
So that should be adequate for any
Okay.
piece of equipment to be able to access without, um, encroaching on your property.
Okay.
Cause eight feet is pretty much the widest, um, vehicle, is it not? I believe so.
I'm not sure how big.
Well, certainly they could, um, uh, they'd have them that small, so I mean, and now you've, you've actually put up some kind of a, a fence or a barrier?
It's two sawhorses and a bucket. With a sign in it that says private property.
I think stakes with a string, uh-
And then I put caution tape amongst the, um, sawhorses because that's the best I could do. Um, it has been a continual problem with people walking through the property, driving through my property. And it's become increasingly, more so in the last month or so, as they become closer to being finished with this project. She's a lovely woman. I've met her. She's very nice. He's done a beautiful job building his mother's home. But there have been verbal things and commitments that have not been fulfilled on his part. That have also disappointed me. You know, I've tried to be a very nice neighbor. I'm a quiet person. Um, my daughter and her husband live with me. They're quiet people. We're in bed early, out early. So it's, it's been interesting to see this process and what it's turned into. I, I, I just have to say that I'm opposed to the size of this project. That's all. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Um, Mr. Duffy spoke of, uh, crease gaping, some trees and whatnot at the fence line. That would be awful. Uh, also some type of stone galleway possibly, crushed stone that runs parallel with the fence to prevent any runoff. Obviously, he's, he's gonna wanna be higher in his pool area. And lower, he's not gonna wanna pitch to his pool. So this is a concern to me. I'm gonna have to find out later on, we have a runoff problem, and it turns into a civil issue between him and I, not this board.
Is the elevation of your property similar to this property?
It is similar, but once he finishes his, finish grading, his hardscaping, you know, it's gonna be an issue. He's gonna be higher, there's no question. He wouldn't put a pool down in a hole.
Is that hardscape going to be, have a permeable, uh, joint filler, or is it gonna, yes?
No, no, no.
It's gonna be stamped concrete?
Yeah.
But still, is the, is there going to be ten feet from the edge of the stamped concrete to the fence?
Doesn't look like it.
No.
That's something I think that there's a landscaping plan that has to be addressed by the landscape engineer.
Where water's gonna go between?
It's gonna be stamped concrete.
Property.
So stamped concrete is basically driveway. It's non-provved. So that is, uh, another three feet around the pool. How is that considered part of the structure?
So, we're definitely looking at a continuance on this.
That's it. It's a viable question.
It should be written in your plan. It shows ten foot three to the edge of the pool.
Discussion from the board about what additional information we're gonna want. Jerry?
I just, more dimensions are moving. I, I don't know what the regulations are for the proposed pool equipment generator. That should be moved further away, if there's any setbacks required.
In front of a, a, a tree would, would certainly dampen the sound and, and provide more distance, um, to Henry's property, for sure. Or that doesn't seem like too much to ask. Nothing works better than a tree. For the generator, you mean?
Yeah.
And pool pump, right?
Additional information, Frank, are you looking?
Yeah, I, well, the ten foot three inches has to be determined whether it's from the edge of the pool or the patio, depending on its composition.
Question for the building inspector.
Building inspector. Then I'd like to see this shed, which they're putting right up in the corner with basically no setback now. A typical shed stores rakes and lawnmowers and-
That's the, I think that's the, that's not a shed, it's the pool equipment.
But it's a shed.
It's gonna be short.
Huh?
It's just a pad.
It's a pad with a generator and a pool pump.
No enclosure.
They're not implanted to house the equipment.
Wow, sounds like-
That, yeah, right, I, that, that, I, I don't like that idea. I wouldn't like to have a generator running just right outside my window.
Just finding a whole time place where you're working the plant.
Moving it forward and housing it.
Enclosed and perhaps with insulation inside. I mean, if we don't do this right, it's gonna annoy everybody for a hundred years, so let's get it right.
Well, you'll be sleeping. I'll be, I'll be- I'll be banging on your door.
Wouldn't they be using a different material around the pool that, like that material, that lock material that we had?
Well, the stamped concrete, if they're gonna keep the distance, it isn't gonna work because it's within the ten feet.
It doesn't have to be a stamped concrete. I think a lot of it in the, in the proposals that she has received, um, but we can deny.
You can use the permeable joint.
Right, exactly. Regular patio, the pavers around the pool or something like that.
That would be kind of an odd question. Have you, have all of you talked before or never talked?
Well, I, I reached out to-
It'd be nice if you could just talk. You might be able to work through a lot of these issues.
I, I tried to reach out, reach out to Mr. Quancy and his mom.
Okay, that's good.
I didn't have any success. He couldn't find time to meet with me, so I would, I would have appreciated walking.
Really?
Could, could you folks send, send us your contact information? Can you email us your name and phone number and we will- Do you have, you know, a holly bush on the property line?
I mean, it makes sense to have that protected as well, right?
It's back from the line. It's probably six feet back, but there are some branches. Some tall branches. The branches are broken.
Oh, five feet off the ground. But if he puts up a six-foot fence, it's definitely gonna need some trimming. You know, it's a very nice tree. You're on a good place with that tree.
So, so if you- So if you-
But you guys all need to get together.
You really need to.
Can you get a little dinner together and figure this out?
The word is said time and time again, our decisions made a lot easier when neighbors get together and suddenly everyone's in agreement and they find a plan and-
I did try to reach out to Mr. Quancy.
I understand.
I understand.
And, uh.
My comments are more directed to the applicant's representative.
Sure, he's a busy guy, but it's a matter of importance.
Of course it is. I understand.
And, uh, and it would have been nice to have a heads up on this and rather receive something in the mail.
So.
It was discussed.
Looking at a continuance at this point. Noreen, do we have a date?
Do they have their homework list?
May eleventh.
May eleventh? Okay.
And, uh.
I think you know what we need, Shannon.
With an agreement.
And maybe some type of, uh, a green plan here, some, some type of.
Right. That's on the list.
Specifically what we've asked to be submitted before we're gonna take action is to, and my suggestion is that Noreen can contact you or vice versa when that comes in to take a look.
And, uh.
As I say always, decisions are a lot easier for us to make when everyone is in agreement or the majority, people work together to mitigate or eliminate all of the objections.
But I, I do think this is a sizable structure for, for the lot area.
Yeah, it's great.
It's within the, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. It's, but I, I would say that.
Well, there is something you can do about it.
They have a right to ask for up to twenty-five percent lot coverage.
Well, why do we have this lot coverage wrong?
Cause we have small lots in town and, um.
This lot's sixteen.
Bylaws are the bylaws.
Yes.
And we have to operate within that.
It's only sixteen.
Yeah, and, and.
Like you just said a minute ago, that light bulb's full. You said that a few times. I, I wasn't quite as smooth as how I was gonna put it. I got a two-pound bag and I got five pounds of, you know what?
We allow twenty-five percent.
Well, I'm sure you, I'm sure that he realized that too when he was building this place. So he already knew that.
Well, he actually, and, and.
I, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but we're coming up on the board's, uh, witching hour. We have other agenda items.
I will make a mo, I will make a motion to continue to May eleventh.
Yes.
Seven.
Made in second. Any discussion on the motion?
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
Possibly some plantings on my side like Mr. Duffy said would be helpful.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Some type of a plant would be very helpful. And appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Patience, evening, sir.
Thank you.
See you later.
I'll do our open meeting agenda items. Uh, we have the minutes of March second, twenty twenty.
Excuse me, board update. The Bruins won.
And a comeback.
Five, four.
Did you?
Well, I'd like to get to the highlights. So minutes of March second, twenty twenty-third and March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Has the board observed? Has the board had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections, additions, substitutions?
I'm gonna bring it outside.
Okay.
None. None. Their motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March second and March twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Finer. Is there a second?
Second.
To, uh. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Some address, email address.
Sir, we meet, we, we, please contact, uh, Ms. Stockman.
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
Siri is way in.
Siri says, when, when are you coming home?
It says it's on.
Not the only one.
Oh, God, help us.
Turning back to our vote on the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. That's their voted.
We can defer this staking.
Actually, I could see points I wanna make on that if, if possible, just, just, um. The, uh, two points I wanna make are, our last meeting, we had two, uh, properties where the actual stake locations were inside the physical building that was to be torn down. And I asked if we could have an offset stake. Surveyor seemed not to be bothered by that. Um, I can see in some situations where it would help, especially when the lot lines are close. And then, um, I was going over this bike inn and it also brought to mind, um, the case we have at two fifty-nine and two sixty-three Old Main Road where, um, the zone, uh, changes. And I'm thinking that there are gonna be instances where that should be indicated by stakes. And I don't know what anybody else's feelings are about that. I was actually speaking with a past chairman of, uh, ZDA, a friend of mine, Matt McNamara, and I brought it up to him and, uh, he said, huh, I never thought of that before and neither had I, but there are gonna be instances where it's, it's gonna be important for us to know where the, where the, um, zone changes. And I think that we should incorporate that into our staking policy.
Discussion?
I'd like to defer discussion for the other two issues because I might have, I might agree with Mark, but I think I disagree with some issues. So I'd just prefer to defer a discussion.
Yeah, I, 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 I just wanna bring that up so you can think about it in the interim. So we won't have to jump into this cold. And then have.
Are we looking to table the staking policy at this point? All right. Table after now. No vote this evening on staking. Uh, we have reconsideration of one ten twenty-two Kelleher, seventy-two Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth. Request to allow a spa, uh, spa pool. We have received a request from Attorney Ommitt requesting that the, the board reconsider the decision that was made, uh, March eighth, twenty twenty-three pursuant to section six point oh three of the Town of Falmouth's zoning board of appeals procedural rules, uh, in which case we denied the request for the spa pool in seventy-two Pheasant Lane. Under our rule six point oh three, upon written request for reconsideration from an agreed party with a signed waiver for the applicant extending the fourteen-day requirement of a decision being filed, the board may vote to reopen a public hearing prior to the filing of a decision with the town clerk only in the case where a serious procedural defect, for example, improper or ineffectual notice of the original public hearing has prevented in the sole opinion of the board, a fa, a full and fair public hearing. This action is to be taken by an affirmative vote of four members of the voting members who participated in the original hearing, uh, which point a reopened public hearing has to satisfy the notification requirements of Mass General laws forty-eight, section eleven. So pursuant to the six point oh three, we have to determine if there was a serious procedural defect which include an error in any of the following, parties in interest, uh, not being properly noticed. My review of the file indicates that notices were mailed, uh, on or on January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the content of those notices could, would be incomplete. Uh, my review of the file and unless everything else has, uh, appears that the notices were in fact correct and complete. Insufficient or improper legal notice, uh, notice in this particular instance was posted in the enterprise on January twentieth and twenty-seven, uh, in compliance with the one and two-week posting prior, prior to the February sixteen, twenty twenty-three hearing. Uh, the agenda appears to have been properly noticed, uh, filed with the town clerk and the town. Uh, and that the hearing was properly and timely held and properly continued. There's not been, at least in the request, uh, any assertion of a procedural defect. I forgot that even, all right. Okay. Um, the request of the attorney's, Mr. Attorney Ommitt's essentially asserting that the dissenting votes were based on improper criteria, uh, that prevented the applicant from receiving a full and fair hearing. The decision should be based on whether the pool or spa would be substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood rather than the existing non-conformity. Pursuant to the case law, we get into essentially grounds for appeal, our decision has to essentially be based on something that's legally, untenable, unreasonable, whimsical, arbitrary or capricious. My feeling on this is that this is a discretionary grant that the board felt that it was, they denied it. So therefore that it was not, uh, that it was more detrimental. So I guess the question to the board, whether or not, is whether or not, is there an appetite or a belief that a serious, based on the standard six point oh three, that there was a serious procedural defect in the board's decision-making or decision that it. So of the five voting members, I'll just take a straw poll as to whether or not there's an appetite for this, uh, or a belief that it was improper.
I, I, I don't believe there was anything improper.
Agree? I don't think so.
I think we were, we took our time. We certainly beat it around and if I saw nothing procedurally incorrect or questionable, so. I agree with Scott. Okay.
Right.
I don't accept that you have to have a notice defect to be a serious procedural defect. I think the fact that it, and it's quite possible that the board's decision was based on improper criteria. I would like to point out that if you build a building without a building permit and the building commissioner catches wind of it, they'll force you to come in and get a new building permit. And the penalty is they charge you a double fee for the building permit, but they don't tell you to tear the house down. So it's not like it's a big sin to do it, uh, build without a, a permit. It's improper. But the remedy is to take care of it and resolve the issue. I also think that, um, in this particular case, had this project come before the board prior to construction, it was an approvable project. I didn't see anything really wrong with it, although the fact that we have a, a de minimis zoning, uh, setback violation, um, there was nobody that showed up and argued against it. We didn't have any neighbors abutting it. Um, it probably could have been approved. But I think somewhere in the procedural, in the, in the decision-making process of members, there was probably, I'm just suggesting now, more reliance on the fact that they didn't come at the proper time for a permit. So I would be inclined to reconsider and, but that's just, that's my, I would vote that way. But I'm one out of five.
Mine, I don't have a problem with reconsideration, only just to make sure that in the decision, we don't have any, an arbitrary or capricious, so that the proper standard was applied. It's not, to deny a permit, a discretionary grant is not a huge burden for the board. So the only reason I would be, well, the only reason I would be inclined to grant reconsideration is just to make sure that if it's still a real denial on the board's part, uh, that it would be legally defensible under review of a superior court of the land clerk. So at this point, I think it's a three to two. So why don't we see if there's appetite for reconsideration at this point? So would someone like to make a motion to allow reconsideration of this decision?
I would do so.
Make that, is there a second? Well, since I'm the other one, I will second the motion for reconsideration at this point. Is there any additional discussion that we need to have on this? Or we have a roll call vote? Right?
Duffy, aye.
Mark?
Finer and no.
Morse, aye.
Murphy, no.
Peterson, no.
That is a failing to Kerry. Motion for reconsideration is denied. Thank you, Mr. Patience. This evening, Mr. Ommitt. Uh, next we have board administrative approval, ten dash twenty-three O'Brien, sixty-eight Woodside Drive, East Falmouth. Permission to replace a roof over the existing raised block porch. Noreen, here to give us a little background.
I wasn't sure. I know in forty years, you're gonna have to speak.
Sure, come on up.
Open meeting.
I'm here.
I was gonna ask, uh, the zoning administrator just to fill us in, but if you're here, by all means.
Good evening again. Um, not my, not my dog, not my fight, but generally speaking, pools, uh, are setbacks to the pool edge, the patio where the hardscape running is not considered part of the structure. But that is, again, not my dog, not my fight.
This is that.
So where we are is. So.
So cute.
When the applicant purchased the property, uh, there was this small stoop, uh, and stair extending beyond the front of the house. The applicant went and spoke with, uh, Rod Palmer, who was the building commissioner at the time, and said, hey, I wanna replace this with a, a raised patio. I'm gonna bring the roof out over it. Is that gonna be a problem? Rod said, no, it's not, as long as you don't come any closer. So what they did was they put in this existing raised patio here and they're proposing, um, now to extend the roof out over the raised patio. They're not proposing any habitable space there and they're simply asking for, they're maintaining the, what was, what is the existing setback to, uh, the front yard, which is twenty-three feet. Um, and we're applying for administrative approval to allow for that.
Any issues brought off?
It's a very flat lot.
Questions for the board?
No drywall required. Is there gonna be a gutter on it?
If you wanted to be a gutter, Mark.
Well, I'm, I'm curious. I, I, you know.
I don't, I don't.
Twenty-two feet from the?
Twenty, it's twenty-three feet from, from the road. Um.
Now, just forget, I, I can't see any, uh, anything running off that structure to run twenty-two feet across the lawn.
It's, uh, it's sixteen-three, sixteen-three, fourteen-seven, you know, sixteen-four.
Why don't we defer to the building commissioner if he wants gutters or anything? That's unreasonable?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the request? Motion to approve the administrative approval for the request? Finer and, yeah, this Murphy, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. That's a vote.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening very much.
Do we need to do conditions or anything?
No. At left before we have to extend, uh, is there board discussion?
We're grateful for the Bruins, maybe?
Board updates.
James, I'm gonna kick in, I'm gonna chime in with the, I believe you guys with the same joke I left the historical commission with recently. I like this one.
Should we extend?
No, no, this is gonna take two, two seconds. Ready? All right. How do farmers party? How do farmers party? They turn up the beats.
Oh. Oh, man.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lucky it's late.
Jeez, you're lucky. You are lucky.
Future agenda items.
Don't, don't take any more jokes from Kevin.
Just gonna make it to ten o'clock. Uh, so the next hearing, excuse me, our next meeting is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, six thirty PM here in the Selectman's Meeting Room. Thank everyone for their patience and their diligence this evening. Good night.